Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for October 14th, 2025. Before we begin, we will be having public comment tonight, and I'm going to ask that you be polite. I know you can do that, most people are. We have some people who find it difficult to express themselves without profanity, and I'm going to ask them to try today to be civil and polite and not wave signs around. I will call out people who raise signs around that block the view of other people. With that, may I have the clerk do the roll call?
Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Malakutian.
Here.
Councilmember Bargava.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen House.
Here.
Councilmember Sumaduria.
Deputy Mayor Malakutian, will you please lead us in the flag sleeve?
Absolutely. Please rise. On behalf of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two proclamations tonight. The first one is the Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month proclamation that will be read by Councilmember Bargava and received by Sushil Kumar, representing Hindu — oh dear — Hindu Swayam Sikak? Savak? Sorry. A nonprofit organization promoting Hindu values and culture. And with that, Councilmember Bargava.
Thank you, Mayor. So whereas Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month provides an opportunity to recognize and honor the significant contributions of Hindu Americans to the social, cultural, spiritual, and economic fabric of our city and nation, and whereas Hindu Americans represent a rich diversity of backgrounds and traditions, including individuals from Indian, Pakistani, Bangladeshi, Malaysian, Indonesian, Afghani, Nepali, Bhutanese, Sri Lankan, Fijian, Caribbean, and European descent, and whereas the teachings and practices of Hindu philosophy such as Vedanta, Ayurveda, yoga, meditation, and the celebration of arts, music, dance, and literature have enriched lives throughout Bellevue and across the United States, and whereas October holds special meaning as the birth month of Mahatma Gandhi, whose philosophy on nonviolence inspired movements of justice around the world, and as time — as the time of major Hindu festivals such as the Navratri and Diwali, which symbolize light, renewal, and triumph of good over evil, and whereas Hindu Americans continue to strengthen Bellevue's civic life through service, innovation, and philanthropy, embodying the city's values of inclusion, compassion, and respect, while reminding us of the importance of understanding and celebrating that diversity that enriches our shared community. Now, therefore, I, Vishal Bargava, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, the mayor of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month. In Bellevue, Washington, and encourage all residents to celebrate the vibrant culture and spiritual traditions of Hindu Americans and to continue building a community rooted in mutual respect, learning, and shared prosperity.
Thank you, Councilmember Sushil. Welcome.
We're two speakers. It is turn on or?
Yep, that's on.
We're two speakers, and Mitajee will speak first. Thanks, no. Then I will do that. Thank you.
So I'm — my name is Mitaj Patel, and I'm Bellevue resident for over 22 years, and my husband is here for 25 years. And thank you very much, first of all. On behalf of Hindu American community, we accept the thanks to you, Mayor Lynn, and thank you to all the councilors and staff and Bellevue residents and city of — staff for processing the award — awarding the proclaim during the festival season of Hindu. The proclaim sends an impact and meaningful message to the Hindu American community in city of Bellevue area and helps educate all Americans about our incredible tradition. This proclamation sends — sorry. Over the last few years, there has been significant growth of Hindu Americans in region, and we have been contributing to all aspects of public life, to our vibrant and diverse social fabric. It would bring the residents pride and gratitude to know that the city recognized the contributions of Hindu Americans here. I'm happy to share that the Hindu American community in collaborations with various community organizations in engaging in driving a service initiative called Seva Diwali of food donations campaigning during this festival season and contributing back to local food banks and the under service in our neighborhoods. In 2024, during the Seva Diwali nationwide, we donated more than $700,000 food to local food banks and shelters. Thank you again for proclamations, and we will look forward to continue engaging with the city council on various community service initiatives. Thank you.
I would like to thank Mayor Lynn Robinson, council members and staff, and data that fellings which is done by Mitajee, and I'm very thankful for continuation of tradition to recognizing October as a Hindu Awareness Month and Appreciation Month. It is really a proud moment for us, being Hindus and living in Bellevue and the surrounding area, to come here and continue support from the city councils and the leadership here. Really, thanks for that.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much. Go ahead and sit down, but stay here, and we'll do a picture at the end of all the proclamations.
Namaste.
All right, thank you. Okay, next, we have Arbor Day, read by Councilmember Sumaduria and received by Sally Lawrence, a longtime Bellevue naturalist, volunteer, and local hero. Sally, you want to come on up and sit down, and then we'll read the proclamation?
Whereas the city of Bellevue has adopted the goal of integrating its natural and built environment to create a sustainable urban habitat for people and wildlife, and whereas the city is dedicated to fostering environmental awareness, appreciation, and stewardship of our natural, cultural, and historical resources through community education and engagement. And whereas Bellevue residents value clean air and water, thriving wildlife habitats, and distinctly unique places to live, work, and play, hallmarks of a city in a park, and whereas trees increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, enriching daily life for all who live and visit here, and whereas trees essential to protecting salmon habitat, providing shade and woody debris along streams, improving air quality and preserving water quality by preventing erosion, and whereas where planted trees are source of joy, beauty, and spiritual renewal, linking generations and inspiring stewardship of our shared environment. And whereas Bellevue, for the 34th consecutive year, has been recognized as a Tree City, USA Community by the National Harbor Day Foundation, reflecting the city enduring commitment to urban forestry and sustainability. Now, therefore, I, Claire Sumaduria, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, the mayor of the city of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim October 18th, 2025, as Arbor Day in Bellevue, Washington, and urge all community members to plant and care for trees to help sustain the health, beauty, and wellness of present and future generations.
Thank you. My name is Dustin Vanuland. I'm one of the Park Rangers with the city of Bellevue, and I just wanted to be here tonight to introduce and welcome you guys to our longtime volunteer on behalf of the Parks and Community Services Department, Sally Lawrence.
Thanks, Dustin. And thanks to city council, Mayor Lynn, and all residents of Bellevue. I'm going to make a few comments about Arbor Day. In 1965, I was at 4H Camp in Connecticut in a nature study class. Darlene showed us earthworms, snails, and caterpillars. She was petite, wore her blonde hair in braids, and had googly glasses. I thought she was weird. We giggled, and behind her back, we called her "the nature creature." So fast forward 60 years, and here I am in Bellevue volunteering as a naturalist for the city parks, explaining to kids and their parents that bats eat mosquitoes and should be protected. I photograph amphibian eggs in our local ponds for a woodland park zoo citizen science project. I am the nature creature. So Arbor Day is about trees, and you know the drill. Trees provide shade, habitat for birds and other wildlife, they protect streams, they're beautiful. So that's what we need to know about trees, right? Actually, there's more. In the 1990s, Suzanne Simmerd, a forest ecologist at University of British Columbia in Canada, through years of research, discovered that tree roots communicate with each other through fungal networks underground. So there's still more exciting things to learn about trees. And as you consider trees and planting them, consider the things that you don't know. Ask good questions. And a great place for asking questions and learning about our native trees will be at Arbor Day this Saturday, September 18th, at Lewis Creek Park. Park staff and volunteer naturalists will be there to hear your good questions and help you plant good stuff. Think about training as a Bellevue naturalist. We are a great bunch. We include people who have lived here for years, like myself, and people who just moved here from St. Louis, or Mumbai, or Hunan, or Sydney, Australia. We are curious about nature. This is one of many exciting communities within Bellevue where you can meet your neighbors and enjoy learning about nature.
Great. Let's have a photograph with you. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, oral communications. Do we have people signed up?
Thank you. Yes, Mayor, there are eight pre-registered speakers on our list this evening, so before I start calling names, I'll go over a few of the rules that the council has in place. So first, the time period for oral communications is for no longer than 30 minutes, and all topics must relate to city of Bellevue government. People speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and then if time remains, people speaking to items not on tonight's agenda will be called. In both of those categories, the presiding officer is authorized to give preference to those who haven't spoken to the council within the last 60 days, or who will be speaking to items that will come in front of the council within the next 60 days. Each speaker is allowed to speak up to three minutes, and only three speakers are allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. And then one final reminder that in compliance with Washington State campaign laws regarding the use of public facilities during elections, no speaker may support or oppose a candidate for election or a ballot measure, and that candidacy includes your own candidacy. Any speaker beginning to speak on those topics will be asked to stop. So with that, I'll call our first speaker, who actually, I believe, was our proc recipient. So I'm going to skip to the next speaker, who is Vic Bishop, who is joining us virtually. Mr. Bishop, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Wait, your time begins now.
Thank you very much. Hi, my name is Victor Bishop, a 50-year Bellevue resident currently living on Westlake-Samamish Parkway. I'm the president of the Westlake-Samamish Parkway Association, and I'm the legislative chair of the Eastside Transportation Association. I serve two terms on your transportation commission, ending as chair. I'm here tonight to support your draft 2026 legislative agenda, or agenda item 25618, on behalf of ETA. I'm pleased that you have continued to include the completion of the I-405 master plan in your legislative agenda. The SR-520-124th Avenue Northeast Interchange Project is clearly the next logical wash-dot project, and is teed up with preliminary engineering complete and ready for the design, build, construction funding by the legislature. I commend you for including that funding as a priority project in your draft agenda. You've also mentioned the need to advance funding to implement the southbound on-ramp to I-405 from Lake Hills Connector to complement the existing northbound off-ramp. Thank you. This is included in the Safe and Efficient Transportation Section in the last bullet item. That ramp will do good things for the access to the — from the South Wilberton Subarea to the South and relieve the Northeast Fourth Interchanges. I want to call to your attention to a third possible ramp connection to downtown that would be a new off-ramp from southbound I-405 to Northeast 10th Street. The 405 Master Plan includes an unfunded project that would rebuild the SR-520 interchange at 405, add direct connection ramps in all directions, and includes a southbound off-ramp to Northeast 10th. This, of course, is a multi-billion dollar interchange rebuild and is decades away. However, it appears that the southbound off-ramp could be a standalone early project. This off-ramp would provide an alternative access to the north portion of downtown and be a relief valve for the Northeast 8th Street corridor. Traffic could utilize the unused capacity of Northeast 10th Street and filter to the west and south in downtown. This idea has not been discussed at length by the city council and is totally unfunded, but I think it is worthy of consideration for preliminary funding to get it started. I would be pleased to discuss this potential project with your staff or any of you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Maria Frost.
My name is Maria Frost, and I'm the vice president of Government Affairs at Kemper Development. Thank you for the opportunity to comment today on the city's proposed 2026 legislative agenda. I appreciate the effort that staff have made in shaping a comprehensive agenda and strategy, but I just want to share a couple concerns. First, I urge you to remove the city's request to expand property tax levy, lid, lift options, and real estate tax authority. On this issue, I'm speaking not only as a representative of Kemper Development, but also as a new Bellevue resident. Higher property taxes don't just affect big property owners; they directly raise monthly housing costs for new buyers, already stretched thin, and impact the ability of families to move within the housing market. When my husband and I moved here with our two children, we struggled for months to find a home we could afford. Despite earning a good living, we are renting because the cost of buying in Bellevue is simply out of reach. Longtime homeowners will be surprised to know that if you want to buy a modest 1,600-square-foot single-family home in East Bellevue, those are now listed at well over $1.4 million and will likely come with an $8,000 mortgage. And that's before you factor in the property taxes that staff want to raise. That also assumes a buyer has $300,000 or 20% to put down on the jumbo loan, which many lenders are requiring. For many families, the math on these numbers is simply unworkable. Raising property taxes or taking a larger share from home sales only makes it hard for families like mine to put down roots here, which we really want to do. If the city wants housing to be more attainable, the answer is not higher taxes that further squeeze buyers and sellers and ultimately move Bellevue in the opposite direction of housing affordability. On a completely different issue, thank you for including last year's language in this year's transportation policy statement that emphasizes Bellevue's support for a statewide autonomous vehicle policy framework, which we hope to see pass in the near future. Staff have also articulated council's longstanding commitment to reducing traffic congestion on Page 6. Thank you, Janice and Katie, for pointing me in the right direction. I had missed that language while looking for it in the key legislative priorities section at the beginning of the document. That said, we would still like to see both congestion reduction and autonomous vehicle language upfront as key priorities, and ask you to consider adding them to the key priorities section for greater visibility and emphasis for lawmakers who may not have time to read the full document. Again, we appreciate the thought and deliberation that has gone into this agenda and look forward to opportunities where we can support Bellevue staff and stakeholders in showing a united front in Olympia on transportation policy and other issues that are important to Bellevue's economic health and quality of life. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mason G.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, esteemed council members. My name is Mason G. I'm an attorney and the board director of the nonprofit organization Friends of Bellevue Cross Cultural Center. The reason why I am appearing before you today is to report back. Had the incredible privilege of appearing before this council a number of times over the last couple of years to speak on the creation of a cross-cultural center. Now, our organization was fortunate to participate in the cross-cultural center without Walls Initiative that was launched last year, and look forward to participating again this coming year. But as we put together the events, as we engage the community, we have heard so much feedback from our community members about the desire to have a physical cross-cultural center space. And I speak today because we just had a recent event where we had dozens of community members submit survey results to us, all of which supported the necessity for a multilingual common space with accessibility for different peoples and groups to come together and exchange their cross-cultural ideas. It goes beyond just culture, because a space like this can allow people from different backgrounds, walks of life, to come together on different issues, bridge the gaps between generations, combine for training in necessary and important fields such as law and medicine, and education for our next generation. I need not tell you, but Bellevue is a special city. This is where I grew up. This is where I call home. And let's make Bellevue even more special by creating a space for a whole of community approach. Let's make Bellevue even more special by creating a space where everybody from different cultures can feel safe. This is not an initiative without walls. It is one that requires us to have a physical space with walls, with dialogue, and with initiative. And so us at the Friends of Bellevue Cross Cultural Center, we urge the council to put the creation of a physical cross-cultural center on the development plan Bellevue 2044, so that we can ensure Bellevue remains the most inclusive and cutting-edge city for decades to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Root.
Risa? I'm talking about the big glass door, the one on the right, please. Thank you.
This is a decibel meter. I've taken some noise measurements per the procedure in WAC 1735880 on various equipment. Chainsaw, gas-powered, 114 decibels. Electric chainsaw, 104. Since the decibel scale is logarithmic, the electric makes only 10% of the noise of the gas. Leaf blower, gas, 116 decibels. Toro power jet, electric, 105. Tractors, John Deere 830 diesel, 96. Vehicles, Ford F-150, 74 decibels. Toyota Camry, 78 decibels. In other words, my truck makes 1/10 of 1% of the noise as my electric leaf blower. Your staff, top to bottom, lawyers, code compliance, police, all think that equipment noise is proportional to engine horsepower. They could not be more wrong. The sound power level of a vehicle making the maximum allowed by the WAC, 95 decibels at 20 inches distance, equates to 0.0000003 horsepower. The horsepower of the engine is irrelevant to noise levels. Noise level is a function of equipment design and the muffler design. As a practical matter, equipment size is inversely proportional to noise. The larger equipment has space to accommodate a properly designed muffler, while the smaller equipment shortcuts noise abatement and to save cost does not provide for an adequate muffler. Your noise regulations were probably written 15 years ago and are hopelessly out of date. They are based on heavy construction equipment and do not reflect the small yard equipment that has become ubiquitous. The only enforceable clause in your noise regulations is the similar-to clause, which requires that an enforcer make a subjective judgment. None of your staff will take that initiative. To relieve the citizens of Bellevue from incessant din of equipment noise, the noise regulations need to be rewritten to make objective criteria that are appropriate to regulate small yard equipment while still allowing for construction and maintenance noise during appropriate hours. The seven of you are the only ones that can get this done. Your staff won't do it. If I can help you, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Drever.
Eric Drever, 20-plus-year resident here in Bellevue. I know you're all familiar. I have a public safety background, and coming before you because I have a public safety concern that impacts all of King County specifically as it relates to Bellevue. You're all familiar with King County and their current budget. They're going through their proceedings, and next month, they're going to be putting a vote on their budget for the next plenary. And the impact that that will have as a public safety relates — or as it relates to public safety is that they are providing funds for the Public Defender's Office over and above what they are currently providing during a time of deficit, which is fantastic, and we need to make sure that we have representation for those that are going under trial and are under prosecution. They have the right to due process. The problem becomes that they are not being equitable in how they then provide those funds to the prosecuting attorney's office. Currently, without adding to the Public Defender's Office, you have roughly 50 more public defenders than you do prosecutors. What that means is victims of crimes are not treated equitably; they're not given the same due process. And so I come before you. I have a copy of the King County Prosecuting Attorney's Budget Proposal and a context letter that she sent to King County Council for you to review. I'd like to give a copy to the clerk's office so that you can reference it. And if you concur with me, my ask is that you reach out to King County and let them know of your shared concern. I understand that we have no say in the King County budget, but when the King County budget and the decisions that they make impact our communities and the victims within our communities, it's important for us to stand up for equitable resources for the prosecutor's office and the public defender's office. Right now, that's not happening, and I offer for your consideration these documents for you to consider, and I would urge you to reach out to the King County Council. I'm doing the same from my public safety position, and I encourage you to do that as well. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Sam Gayumstan. I'm so sorry. That was horrible. If you could pronounce your last name, that would be great. Thank you.
Good evening, Bellevue City Council. My name is Sam Gayumjin, and I would like to voice my concerns regarding ongoing issues around our neighborhoods, schools, public parks, sidewalks, bus stops, because of specific unprecedented programs like the Sophia Way Homeless Shelter and low-income housing, the 30 apartments that have been funded with taxpayer dollars. These programs have shown to cause not only carelessness, but also disruption and harm to the area in Bellevue. Ongoing nuisances like hazardous waste spills, theft, littering, damage to private property, graffiti, drug consumption, and many other factors have caused extremely disturbing situations to tolerate, and I'm — I would want to voice these subjects that are immense risk of danger and promotes violent morals and values to continue, which unfortunately explains the influx of police reports being made in the local area and surge of fear being grown and rooted in local communities, yet with little to no action compared to when these programs were nonexistent. and surge of fear being grown and rooted in local communities, yet with little to no action compared to when these programs were non-existent. And I would like to show a map that I highlighted and read, that you guys will get the materials later, showing such actions being presented. And these bus stops in 2019 versus now have been getting far worse and have left a negative impact throughout our areas, including encampments and many other things that have been evident. And I walk around the Bellevue area, and I'm just simply concerned and about my safety and of my neighbor's safety. And I'm just genuinely shocked that no one is here to talk about this. And now to anyone who is listening, imagine if such actions were to occur directly outside of your house or your neighbor's house. What would be the response, and how does this provide any good example for younger youth and adolescents to follow? These are posed questions that are left unanswered, including by your own Code of Compliance Department, which I directly contacted, and depict any written law being violated as factual in these situations. And I also provided my neighbor's mailbox being dismantled because of these encampments. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Alex Zimmerman.
Please keep your sign down because you're going to block the view of the audience.
No, 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 I know this. I know. Don't worry.
That's a warning.
I disabled men, so a little bit have a problem. Not blocking. Don't worry. Yeah. I don't block. Yeah. Yeah, we can speak. I can speak. Yeah. Happy Jewish holiday today for another 5,000 year. My name, Alex Zimmerman.
Please put your sign down so you don't block the audience.
Yeah, I did. Don't worry. My name, Alex Zimmerman. I live in Bellevue for 40 years, and I'm almost 40-plus years. I am American citizen. It's only one citizenship what is I have in my life. It's only American, and fighting for this citizenship almost all my life. Yeah, probably from five-year-old. Bellevue have unique situation, but it's don't have analogy in America. We have 120,000 people, 65 Indian and 45 Chinese. Yeah, what is come to America to Bellevue. You know what it mean? Is this all people have two citizenship? By definition, and from my understanding, Trump publicly talk about this. So he want terminate from America 55 million people who have second citizenship. But this not a problem when you have citizenship.
I have a order. Immigration is a federal issue, not a Bellevue City Council issue.
No, this is exactly what is I want to explain to you. Yeah, you very smart. I know this. Yeah, so what is I want to explain to you? So when these people have two second citizenship, they working for Amazon or for garbage man, you know what it mean? It's okay with me.
Mr. Zimmerman, I'm going to guide you to talk about something that has to do with the Bellevue City Council.
Absolutely. This is exactly what is I want. Don't interrupt me. Don't spend my time. Yeah. But very important, people with two second citizenship cannot work for government. It's exactly what has happened here in this chamber. We have two people who have two second citizenship, Muhammed Iranian Muslim terrorist, from my understanding.
Okay, Mr. Zimmerman, you cannot lie about people just to malign their character.
No, I don't lie.
We do not tolerate that, and the freedom of speech is not protected that.
Don't interrupt me. When I lie, I don't lie. It's my information. What is I delivery to you. It's my right.
That's a warning. If you do that again, I'm going to stop you.
Why you stop me?
Because you're not following the rules. That's why.
What is the rule? I told you, people with two citizenship cannot work for government and exactly be a council. And you have these people here. What are you talking about? You are criminal. I told you before. What is you doing this? We relate constitution and law. Why are you doing this?
Okay.
You cut me so I cannot, people cannot hear this? I will talk next time. When you give me trespass for 60 day, I'll be very happy. We can talk outside.
Oh, okay. What are you going to talk about?
No, you understand about your talking? They cannot work for American government. They, American government, two citizenship only show, so these people cannot doing this. It's a crime by definition.
You're done.
They don't have obligation to US Constitution and US people. No, we were Trump. We were new American revolution.
He is violating our rules, and I'm going to have that written up, please. Thank you.
The next speaker on our list is.
There's another one. There's another one we'd like to write up, please. Thank you.
That is the end of our pre-registered list, though I will say we do have a hand online. But first, I'll do a call out in chambers. If there's anyone else joining us this evening who would like to make comment to the council, please raise your hand. Okay, I'm going to take the one hand online, and then I will come to you. Two people. So online is Joe Kunsler. Mr. Kunsler, can you hear me? Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Robinson for standing up to Alex Zimmerman. Mr. Zimmerman claims to be Jewish, but I happen to know a Jewish politician. And if I'm out of order, I'm out of order. I'll bring this back to Bellevue business quickly. But this politician serves in inner community, and there's been a lot of lies and tropes that Jews have due loyalties. I know it's not true, not just because I have Jews in my family, but because this Jewish politician turned to me and said, "Do not volunteer me to go place superhero for Jews." I said, "Community first."
Mr. Kunsler, I'm sorry, just in all fairness, please limit your comments as something that has directly to do with our Bellevue City Council work, okay?
Agreed. I will rephrase very carefully. And I will just say that I'm sorry that your deputy mayor had to sit through that because I know that many immigrants have loyalties only to America and Bellevue. And I think it was just absolutely deplorable and unpatriotic to question somebody's patriotism who is out there volunteering in the community, whether as an elected official or an inner public servant. I think that public service is noble and should be treated with respect. That was my first concern. My second concern is that I hope that Mr. Zimmerman is written up and gets a full six-month exclusion. His behavior towards you, as you just saw, also is going on at the boards and committees. Third, I've scheduled a consultation with the Public Disclosure Commission about his borderline campaigning. I don't want to cry wolf unless there's an actual wolf there. You can just tell him a country boy. In conclusion, I want to thank you for all you do, and I'll just leave it at that and wish you a good meeting. And finally, good to hear Maria Frost. I agree with her that we need to bring property values down in Bellevue so everyone can afford a home on the east side, and I'll stop there.
Sir, if you want to come forward, do you still want to speak? Yeah, if you can, please state your name for the record when you said. Thank you.
Dustin, born and raised in Bellevue, Washington. By the way, just shout out, that's really cool via Mountain Rain here. It's the first time I've been here. That's pretty cool. So just wanted to give a shout out to that. I think it was last week or two weeks ago when you guys were talking about, you guys had someone for the World Cup. I was pretty intrigued by that because that is a big deal for the city here. Seattle, Kirkland, Redmond, every, seems like every city has got something on board. What I wanted to say for you guys is it's a big deal. So we want to take advantage of everything in the city that we can. Hopefully, light rail next year. We're really hoping that will offer a wish into that. But I think it would be good to just try to outreach to every business possible, every pub, every restaurant, every bar. Just get the word out. It's a big deal. This is the World Cup. Let's get these businesses filled in, you know? And I'm sure ticket prices for the World Cup are already, you know, they're pretty crazy, if you've seen them. Hopefully, you guys are able to get to that. But just, yeah, just wanted to come up here, just give a shout out, you know, for the World Cup because it's a big, it's a big deal. So I know everyone's excited. Everyone here is excited, hopefully. I'm excited. Just first time being here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that is the end, and I don't believe I saw any additional hands. So, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have a report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, and council. So we have a mini-city hall out at Crossroads. Most of you know that. It's been a space in the community that has provided access for residents to services of the city and services of all types from our partners. And about a year ago, it expanded. And having more space there has allowed the team to grow the partnerships with some of the nonprofit organizations and expand the reach of it. So tonight, in this report, we have Assistant Director Mike McCormick-Huntleman and welcoming back Ying Carlson, who was, I think, here last year as well, the community services provider or supervisor. And then Ramu Ayaluru, our mini-city hall program administrator. And they are going to give you a little update about what's happening at the mini-city hall these days. So, Mike?
Thank you, City Manager Carlson, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, council members. As you know, mini-city hall is really a trusted place in our community to provide connection to reliable information, access to city and community services. And in 2022, council, as part of the legislative agenda, added the request for seeking support from the state to open a larger facility. That was successful. That leadership and advocacy was successful. And you know, in '24, we were able to move into our larger facility. And that, as a result, has enabled for us to be able to add some new partnerships, as well as have a facility to help be adaptive to the changing needs that we're still seeing out in our community. So before we launch into this presentation, I'm just giving the message of thank you again for ways in which your leadership helps us to be able to be more resilient as a community and to better serve our community at large. And with that, I want to turn things over to Ying to be able to walk through some of the nuts and bolts of this presentation. As you know, this is for information only, and we're not asking for any council direction tonight. Ying?
Council members, thank you so much for having us here. So Ramu will share a little bit of history of the mini-city hall program, including the newly renovated space, and how that enabled us to expand current partnerships and seek new ones. And I will then share some of the emerging issues and trends that we are seeing while serving the community and how we're responding to those needs. And I'm going to hand it over to Ramu to give us a background of our program and partnerships.
I'm Ramu Ayaluru, Program Administrator for Mini-City Hall. I'm also a Bellevue resident and grew up in the Crossroads neighborhood and went to Bellevue School District. So it really is an honor to work in the city and serve the community that raised me. Like Ying mentioned, I'll be giving some background. So Mini-City Hall opened its doors 30 years ago to Bellevue residents and community members in East King County region. We're known for great multilingual and multicultural services. We welcome everyone regardless of their language barriers, social and economic barriers. And we've really been a trusted resource for community members in the East King County. We partner with local nonprofits to help bridge social service gaps that residents and community members are facing. This really allows us to, you know, bring in-person services to community members that may need it and may not know where to find it due to other barriers. In a given year, we serve about 20,000 residents and can help with about 50,000 service requests. And like Mike mentioned, in 2022, thanks to your support and state legislators, we were awarded a grant, and this led to the expansion of a new office space in 2024. The expansion was complete in 2024, like I stated, and it also coincided with Mini-City Hall's 30-year anniversary. So the city of Bellevue held a grand opening, as well as an anniversary celebration, where over 300 community members, state legislators, and many of our community partners attended. It was a really great showing to show how much impact Mini-City Hall has made over the 30 years. And the new space also offers a greater outreach opportunity for us. We have two dedicated partnership rooms, a multipurpose room that can fit up to 12 people, and all the rooms are equipped for hybrid services. This has really been a great need for us, especially because in the old office space, community partnership staff and residents were getting help in the main concourse of the mall, putting out all their vulnerable information just to get service needs for their family or for themselves. So it's really amazing to see the support we were able to get to expand to this new space. The expansion also led to the growth of new partnerships and growth of existing partnerships. This includes partnerships with PIM-SAVI that provide free financial coaching, job search, resume help, DS-HS enrollment, and also an ESL course that they just started through Mini-City Hall. We also have Africans on the East Side and Immigrant Women's Community Center that provide a free in-person multilingual navigation of services. So if you're a new individual to the country or Bellevue and you don't know where to find resources, organizations like Africans on the East Side and Immigrant Women's Community Center can help bridge those service gaps for you while filling out the application, informing you on what you're getting yourself into, and just really being great wraparound services for individuals. A service we were able to bring back is King County Metro's pop-up orca events. Pre-pandemic, it was really popular. We would have a line out the door in the old Mini-City Hall space. And due to space limitation and also because of pandemic issues, right, they had to postpone that service, and now we're able to bring it back and we're connecting community members with affordable transportation means around King County. And lastly, is just the expansion of Spanish services for Chinese Information Service Center. They already had a Chinese Mandarin and Russian-Ukrainian interpretation service in-house through Mini-City Hall, and they were able to add Spanish as of recent. And, you know, Mini-City Hall and our partnership staff all speak a second language aside from English. And some of those languages are Arabic, Chinese, Spanish, Somali, Russian, Ukrainian, Hindi, Tamil, and Telugu. Those are some of the services they can get in person. We also utilize the interpretation service language line that other city facilities utilize that give us over 240 languages over the phone. And lastly, is just, over the last 30 years, Mini-City Hall has been, you know, this neighborhood service-based program has been really excellent. We're great with working with individuals and learning their needs and concerns, as well as just working with a diverse community that speaks multiple languages. And just want to thank you for your support again, and I'll be passing it back to Ying.
So there is this saying among our Mini-City Hall team that there's not a typical day really at Mini-City Hall because of the wide range of the programs we offer and also because of various issues and questions that we hear from the community. The most common requests are food, rent, utility assistance, affordable housing, homelessness issues, access to healthcare, cultural and language barriers is a big topic, and including immigration issues. This past year, we've been fielding some increasing questions of federal actions reducing funding for services and increasing immigration enforcement activities in our community. So the Mini-City Hall outreach and trust building efforts are really important touchstone for many of our residents and will continue to look for ways to adapt to the changing situation in order to reach our residents. So while there are uncertainties, we have adopted our approach to better meet community needs. And thanks for the new facility, now we have more space to, for community-based organizations to operate onsite at Mini-City Hall and to provide direct services to residents. And they are really trusted partners that we have partnered together because they have strong relationships and credibility with the people we serve together. So it's just so great having them there. To further reduce barriers, we have also made our partnership rooms scheduling more flexible. And we have also made our program have virtual options so that individuals can have multiple ways to participate and to connect with city staff. Additionally, we have expanded our outreach beyond the walls of Mini-City Hall. We have taken the resources directly to the community, sometimes through events and places like the libraries, schools, or food banks. And you can see the picture here on the slide that was in Stevenson Elementary School just a few weeks ago or their curriculum night, and our staff were outside there just to share resources with people and kind of connect with folks to let them know Mini-City Hall programs. So all these changes are really about meeting people where they are at so they can get the help they need in a space or format that is most accessible to them. And I really want to once again thank you for the council's ongoing support. The space has been just wonderful, and all the partners and all the residents come to Mini-City Hall just loving the space and loving the connection that we build with them. So we'll continue to operate as a trusted source for information and access to service for the Bellevue community. Thank you so much.
Wonderful report. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager, for bringing that information to us. Okay, next we have the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, are we okay if we do the public hearing and then take a break? Everybody okay with that? All right, let's go ahead, and I'll have the City Manager introduce the public hearing, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight is a required step in the process for council decision-making in the Tamiri request to enroll their property in the Public Benefit Rating System Open Space Classification. Council received a briefing on the PBRS Public Benefit Rating System program and the scope of the request on September 23rd. And in your packet for the meeting tonight, you have staff responses to the questions raised by council, and they've also provided their review of the application and recommendation. So we have staff here tonight to give you a short overview. Tara Johnson, Planning Director, Katie White, our Assistant City Attorney, and prior to you opening the public hearing. I'll turn it over to Tara.
Thank you, City Manager Carlson. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council Members. So tonight, we have a short presentation for you in advance of the public hearing. We're here, of course, to talk more about the request to enroll the Tamiri property in the public rating benefit system. So we'll start off. Our recommended action or request from council tonight is, of course, hold a public hearing and then consider adoption of the resolution, which is included in your packet, denying the Tamiri application for enrollment in the PBRS Open Classification System. So as part of our presentation tonight, we'll start off with a brief recap on the PBRS program, which we covered at your September 23rd meeting. We're not going to go into as much detail as we did. We'll also touch on the scope of the request for the application, and then walk through both the King County's review process, as well as the King County Hearing Examiner's recommendation. We'll talk about Bellevue staff's analysis, and then also present our staff recommendation before concluding with next steps. So just to provide a little bit of context and background on the Benefit Rating System program. In 1970, the Washington State Legislature enacted the Open Space Taxation Act as an incentive for property owners to preserve open space, farmland, and timberland on property. In return for preservation and conservation, eligible portions of the property are taxed at a lower rate. The Act also provides authority for county to adopt public benefit rating systems to set open space priorities. King County has an existing program under their code, under King County Code Section 2036. And consistent with state law, the purpose of the program is to encourage conservation of natural resources in the county, including resources within city boundaries to maintain important wildlife habitat, open space, wetlands and streams, working forests, and productive farmlands. So just to talk a little bit about the overall process. Since the property is located within the city of Bellevue, both jurisdictions, King County as well as Bellevue, are responsible for evaluating the property and assessing whether it qualifies for the open space categorization. Each jurisdiction has to hold a public hearing on the application, and then the Act also requires that both the county and city have to identically approve the application for the classification to go into effect. The process, of course, began with the application being submitted, and then there was a site visit that happened and occurred earlier this year with both city and county staff, as well as the applicant. After some initial review and some technical issues that required resolution, we held an initial study session, as you may recall, with you a few weeks ago on September 23rd. And then King County held a public hearing with the Hearing Examiner on September 24th, and the Hearing Examiner's delegated authority to hold a hearing under the King County Code. The Hearing Examiner's recommendation was issued on October 3rd and ultimately recommending denial on the request. And then the next step will be for that recommendation to be forwarded to the King County Council for action, provided that there are no appeals filed during the appeal period. We are, of course, here tonight for our City Council to hold a public hearing as part of Bellevue's process, and will also provide an opportunity for staff to answer any additional questions that you may have. If either jurisdiction denies the application or the actions are not identical, then the request is automatically denied. But if both Bellevue and King County are approving the applications, then an open space taxation agreement would go into effect, and then the tax reduction would start occurring in early 2026. So just to zoom in on the request. The applicant's site is located in the Bridle Trails neighborhood. They're requesting to enroll approximately 1.33 acres out of the total site area, which is 1.38 acres. So the area in yellow that's hatched is the area that contains the residents, landscaping, driveway, things like that, that are not eligible under the PBRS program. And then, as we discussed at the last meeting as well, there are some existing easements that are located on the property. So there's the Trails End easement that's dedicated to the plat or subdivision. And then there's an existing Puget Sound Energy Olympic Pipeline easement that's also located on the property. As we said earlier, the home has to be excluded, so that's approximately 0.28 acres. So at a maximum, about 1.1 acres could be eligible. Just to talk a little bit about the King County staff's recommendation. So the area towards the left of the green lines, which represents the PSC Olympic Pipeline easement. King County staff recommended that area to the left as a public recreation area and potentially eligible. And then the Grassy and Witted area to the right of the PSC Olympic Pipeline easement could be eligible under urban open space and their significant wildlife categories. And we'll talk about those categories in more detail as part of this presentation. So as I said before, the site is located in the Bridle Trails neighborhood. There's the Trails End easement, and then it's located just east of the Bridle Trails State Park as well. I'll turn things over to Katie to cover the next couple of slides.
So the slide here is intended to be just a broad overview of the application. It identifies the categories that Mr. Tamiri applied for. So he applied for 11 out of 20 possible open space resource categories. Staff's complete analysis of each category is contained in Attachment B to the Agenda Materials. You can find that there. For purposes of this presentation, we're going to focus our discussion on the three categories in bold, as those were the three categories that King County staff had recommended approval of and which were ultimately denied by the recommendation of the Hearing Examiner. So first, just generally, want to go over the evaluation criteria for the application. So like we talked about last time, the city must consider the statutory factors, which are outlined in the Act. That includes the tax loss or shift from granting the classification, as well as whether the classification would conserve or enhance natural, cultural, or scenic resources, protect streams, wetlands, natural shorelines and aquifers, promote conservation principles through educational opportunities, among other criteria focused on enhancement or conservation of natural lands. And these factors are outlined in full on Page 4 of the Agenda Memo, and city staff have analyzed all of those factors in relation to this property and have concluded that the factors do not support open space classification of this particular property. So next, the city must also consider King County's PBRS program code. As I discussed, it provides for 20 open space resource categories, which could exist on a property. Each open space resource category is assigned a certain number of points. In a property, you must have at least five points in order to qualify for any open space classification and corresponding tax reduction. So this is one of the categories that King County staff had recommended approval of. It's the public recreation area category. And county staff had recommended that the Trail Easement area, which is 0.23 acres, met this criteria. The King County Code requires that, in order for this category to be met, there must be land devoted to provide active or passive recreation. It must be identified by the jurisdiction as meeting the definition of a public recreation area, and the property owner must use best practices as outlined in the code. Ultimately, city staff analyzed the specific criteria and found that the criteria was not met in this case. In particular, the trail that exists on the property was pre-existing. It was dedicated in 1961 on a plat map, and there's no evidence that Mr. Tamiri has the ability to maintain or control that portion of the trail. Also, it does not substitute for a city trail network or park as there's a lack of evidence demonstrating any notable public use of the trail. The next category that was recommended for approval by King County staff was the significant wildlife habitat. And this criteria requires the presence of a species of local significance as listed in the comprehensive plan by King County, as well as being found with sufficient frequency for ecological processes like reproduction, nesting, and feeding. In this particular case, the applicant did note the existence of piliated woodpeckers, which are a species of local significance. However, there was no documentation provided as to the frequency with which they were found on the property. So there were no photographs or evidence of nesting, any significant reproduction, anything like that. So ultimately, city staff has concluded that this category is not met. And the third category that King County staff recommended approval of was urban open space. And this requires native plants being dominant on the property, as well as the ability for the portion of the property to be redeveloped to greater intensity. And it must be at least half an acre. So in this particular case, there was not half an acre of the property where native plants were dominant and could be redeveloped to greater intensity. So staff has recommended denial of this category as well.
So you want to briefly outline King County staff's recommendation, just highlight some of the thought process there. So very similar to the recommendation that they made in 2022. A few of the council members were a part of that process as well. King County staff recommended credit, as we described, under those three PBRS categories. They recommended that, in addition, they recommended that up to 1.1 acres could be awarded. So I think the base was 0.67 acres, then it could go up to 1.1 if the applicant submitted a resource restoration plan. Based on the staff recommendation and qualifying for those three categories, they'd qualify for 20 points, which would equate to a 70% tax reduction for the 0.67 acres. And then if the applicant submitted a resource restoration plan, they could be eligible up to an 80% tax reduction on 1.1 acres. Overall, we did an evaluation of the tax impact. And based on the applicant's request, which was for 1.33 acres, that would equate to an annual tax reduction of $8,300 for the property. So just to go into a little bit more detail on the King County Hearing Examiner's recommendation. As Katie mentioned, the Hearing Examiner recommended denial. And so want to highlight some of the key elements of his analysis. Focused on a lack of evidence that the Trail Easement met Bellevue's criteria of a public recreation area. Then regarding the second category, which is significant wildlife habitat, the Hearing Examiner emphasized that there was a lack of evidence of piliated woodpeckers located on site. And then lastly, the last category relating to urban open space. As a county, could not combine the two areas were not contiguous, so they were separated from each other by the PSC Olympic Pipeline easement. And then also, Hearing Examiner also concluded that no bonus points could be awarded as they didn't meet any of the other categories as well. So Bellevue staff recommendation. Our analysis also concluded that the applicant did not meet any of the criteria, so any of the 11 open space categories. It's also our assessment that the applicant did not meet the intent of the act for preservation of open space or farmland, since a large portion of his property is currently encumbered by several easements, as we've described, and is therefore not developable to begin with. In addition, we also learned from the King County assessor that the base assessed value of the land is slightly lower due to the presence of the easements in the first place. So just to summarize, it's a fairly complex topic. So wanted to just highlight what the differences are in the recommendations. So King County staff's analysis concluded that the applicant met or qualified under three categories. King County's Hearing Examiner concluded that the applicant did not qualify under any category, and Bellevue staff's analysis aligns with the King County Hearing Examiner's analysis or recommendation. And then King County staff's analysis concluded that 0.67 acres could qualify out of the total 1.38 acres, and then 1.1 could qualify with a resource restoration plan. And then coincidentally, both Bellevue staff and the King County Hearing Examiner, since we concluded that the applicant did not qualify under any of the categories, none of the portion of the site would qualify. So tonight, council has options on which path you choose to move forward with. One option is to align with Bellevue staff's recommendation, which also aligns with the King County Hearing Examiner's recommendation, which is to deny the request. And then another option is for Bellevue City Council to approve the application with conditions or approve the application without conditions. So this provides, just similar to what we've presented earlier on tonight, the next steps for council are to take action on the application if you're ready to do so. And then, of course, the tax exemption would only be granted and would move forward if both King County and the city of Bellevue approved the application and the approvals are identical. So with that, I'll turn things back to you, Mayor.
So you're recommending adopting the resolution that denies the application?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to open the public hearing. We'll listen to public comment. We'll close the public hearing, and we'll have a chance to ask questions. I have a procedural question for staff. Is council discussion limited to the Hearing Examiner's denial criteria?
No.
Okay.
You can discuss any aspect of the application.
Okay, thank you. All right, so... So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, is there anybody signed up to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. There are two pre-registered speakers and I believe only one of them I see, so I'll call our first speaker, who's Barbara Hughes.
My name's Barbara Hughes and I'm here tonight to represent Bridle Trails Community Club. I'm the board president. Bridle Trails Community Club has previously objected in 1922 to the similar application to put part of this property into the PBRS. There is no public benefit to this property going into the PBRS and it would not be accessible to the public other than the Trail's owned HOA easement, which is already in some public use. Further, the trail is remote from roads and apparently used only by neighborhood residents. Much of the land at this address cannot be developed anyways due to the power lines and easement. This application does nothing to increase or preserve land in public use and is of no benefit to anyone living in Bellevue. In fact, it appears to be the opposite as it will increase the tax paid by everyone else in Bellevue to compensate for the tax not paid by this owner. To give the owner a tax reduction that is not available to other Bellevue residents, sorry, Bellevue taxpayers living on smaller lots seems to us to be inequitable. We are asking you to deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. I do see our second speaker now connected online. Ms. Johnston, can you hear me? Ms. Johnston, can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Your time begins now.
Thank you so much. I repeat what Barbara says and, but I also would like to say that this is a very important aspect of our taxation that should not be abused. This act that opens, open public space was actually a constitutional amendment in 1968 and it was called Taxation Based on Actual Use, House Joint Revolution Number One, that was voted on by the public. It was to provide farms, agricultural lands, standing timber, timberlands, and other open space lands for recreation and enjoyment of the scenic and natural beauty, which will be valued for the purpose of taxation based on the present use such property currently is being applied rather than the highest best use. There's reasons why that they wanted it or not, but they called it the Green Belt Bill for the open space. And I think that this is very important, that we should not be giving away ta- tax-free land for things that are not really important to us. And this was not an important thing. It's, it was made to preserve green belts, natural beauty and contest, prevent further loss of irreplaceable farm or topsoil and fertile riverlands, retain areas needed for outdoor ex- recreation and meet Washington's recreation demand, protect 3.8 billion annual income of payroll for our farms, food, and forest industries. At the time, they were concerned that it was of a forest industry bill. And I can't see my, my timing on here.
Forty seconds, forty seconds.
So I just want to make sure that I would, I would ask the council to send a, send a request to King County to upgrade their provisions in this category of open space to make, make it, make sense so that not like hundreds of Bridle Trails residents would be eligible for this. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of our pre-registered list, so at this point I'd ask if there's anyone else joining us this evening in council chambers or online. If you would like to make a comment, please raise your hand.
I, I don't think that these propositions that are being offered is any, is bringing any benefit because Bellevue already has enough parks, enough, enough recreational spaces to, to, for the general public. And if anything, this should be a communication to other, to other places and King County in general to, to gear their attention to security and lack of response and, and, and I, I just, I don't think that this is bringing any benefit. Again, it's a, it's a, it's just wasting taxpayer dollars towards issues that are, again, not, not liable and, and by proven from my public hearing that I presented, these parks are not being maintained in the Bellevue area, including Spring Hills Park and the QFC down in, in Bellevue way northeast. There's been many, many littering, many disruption.
You need to keep this, you need to keep your comments to this Bridle Trails property situation.
Yeah, so, so again, that, that to answer your question and your comment, it's just wasting taxpayer dollars.
Thank you. I don't see any additional hands, so Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any comments or questions? This is pretty straightforward. We addressed this previously, so I'm not seeing anybody, so let's go ahead.
I did have two questions.
Okay, okay, go ahead, Councilmember Bargada.
Just a really quick couple of clarifications on, on just due process here, so that it's clear. One, on this issue of wildlife, and we talked about the applicant claiming that there is, I don't know, piliated woodpecker, I don't know if I got it right. But is the burden on the applicant in the process like this? Is it required? Is that, because like, there could be or could not be an easy way to sort of create the documentation, but does the burden typically rest on the applicant for something like this?
Yes, so generally speaking, the burden is on the applicant. There is a provision in the King County code for the significant wildlife category that discusses if there are like studies, for example, that show the piliated woodpecker is nesting, reproducing in this really specific area, that would constitute evidence, but there is no evidence of that before the council. So that would be the burden of the applicant or King County to set forth, which they also did not set forth.
Got it. Second last, second question, on the assessed value, maybe this is not a fair question actually, but I'll ask it, you can just say, don't know. Does the encumbrance of various easements on the property also get factored into the assessed property tax value for the property so that that's accounted for in the developable opportunity for the parcel?
That was something I checked in with the King County assessor, just to understand the, you know, how they come up with the assessments and if, for, to answer that very specific, that very particular question. And yeah, I did get feedback from King County assessors as they do, they do factor in the presence of easements into the assessed land value.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
That's a good question. Okay, okay, Councilmember Lee.
I'm inclined to deny the, as you recommended, the city staff, you know, the requests by the owner. But I do have a question. Since King County staff recommended to, you know, accept it, how do we reconcile with them? Is it a process to do or is it necessary? Just be curious of, you know, what you do do.
So the process was for King County staff's recommendation, similar to, to our staff recommendation, being forwarded to the King County hearing examiner. So hearing, King County hearing examiner held a hearing, actually, the day after our last study session with council and then concluded that he didn't, he didn't feel like the applicant had met the criteria. So King County's staff recommendation was not, has not been upheld so far. The next step is for the hearing examiner's recommendation, which is to deny the request to be forwarded to King County Council for final action.
So in that case, that our city doesn't really have to make any recommendations. If we do not, then it's denied, right?
Those are two separate processes. So Bellevue has to make a, take action on the request and then King County has to take action on the request, so two separate processes.
Okay, so what does that mean? So King County staff recommended, we denied it and hearing examiner denied it, so what's going to happen?
The next step is for the King, within the King County process, is for it to move forward to the King County Council.
I see.
And then our process is to have the public hearing tonight and then Bellevue Council would take action on it.
So what can we do to assure that the property owner will be denied?
You'll vote on that. So even though King County, the hearing examiner has recommended denial and it will go to council on consent if it's not appealed, the Bellevue City Council still has to vote on it, so you would vote.
Right, but if the King County Council approves it, we deny it, what's going to happen?
The application would be denied at that point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Both, both approvals have to be identical.
Right. Sounds good. Otherwise, you'd be denied.
Yes.
Thank you. That's what I'm asking.
Deputy Mayor.
I move to adopt Resolution 10549, denying the Temeri application to enroll portions of King County parcel number 8669400210 located at 4277 137th Avenue Northeast Bellevue, Washington to open a space classification under King County's Public Benefit Rating System program.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passed, the denial passes. Thank you very much. We're going to take a break here. We'll come back at quarter till. All right, we're back in session. We have two study session items tonight. City manager, would you like to introduce the first one, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. The Sustainable Bellevue Plan is the first study session and this plan lays out existing and new strategies that will lead to greenhouse gas emissions reductions that are applicable to both our community level emissions and also our municipal emissions. It also includes new resiliency strategies to help us better manage climate impacts. So the staff has been working over the past year with our community and also was here at the council in July to give you an overview of the, the plan development. And tonight, they're here to present the plan to you. It has been reshaped from our existing plan to have much more clear strategies that will help put us on track to reach the 50% reduction goal and also the 95% greenhouse gas emissions reduction targets. It also has clearer ranges of costs and effectiveness of potential actions for us to be using in decisions in the future. We don't control all of the actions, of course. We have federal and state partners that help us with the climate goals and the reduction strategies. And for the reduction strategies that we do control here at the local government level, this body will be integrally part of making those decisions, particularly around the budget time when we put recommendations in front of you for actions. So tonight, we have Tara Johnson, our planning assistant director in planning. We have Jennifer Ewing, our sustainability manager, and Anna Hagera, our sustainability planning manager in FAM. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Tara to start the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Carlson. Good evening again, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. So tonight, we're very excited to present to council that our recommended 26 to 2030 Sustainable Bellevue Plan. And as City Manager Carlson mentioned, it really marks a culmination of 12 months of very hard work, which has included reviewing progress to date on the existing plan, updating our environmental goals, analyzing additional strategies to achieve our goals, and then also implementing newly adopted policies relating to climate change and resilience that were recently adopted into the comprehensive plan. Also included performing extensive public outreach and engagement and we released a draft plan for public comment in the summer. And then what you see before you is the finalized draft plan for discussion tonight. So we're requesting council to consider directing staff to come back at a future meeting to adopt the Sustainable Bellevue Plan. Our presentation tonight will start off, provide council with background on the plan. We talked about updating goals, so progress been made so far. We'll also talk about what we heard from the community throughout the engagement process in terms of what they're prioritizing as important strategies to be emphasizing and including in the plan. We'll recap our discussion with you in July and what we heard from city council. And then we'll talk about our structure for the plan, which is a little bit different this time around. So we're proposing a different framework for the plan, which we'll talk about. And then we'll cover our recommended strategies and highlight some of the actions as well. And so with that, I'm going to turn things over to Jennifer to walk us through the highlights of the community portion of the plan.
Great, thank you. Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Excited to present the recommended plan to you this evening. Tara mentioned some of these points, but yeah, quick recap, we've been working on the plan update over the past year. We've essentially been doing kind of ongoing community engagement, but we've sort of divided it into three phases, aligning with the three phases of the plan update where we reviewed and updated the goals, reviewed the strategies and updated them, and then the, developed the actions for the plan. You know, throughout the process, we've been focusing on high-impact strategies that will either, you know, help to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and/or increase the, our community resiliency to climate change. And we've heard a desire from council and our community, you know, to really ensure that this plan puts us on track to achieve our, our long-term climate goals. So as Tara mentioned, the plan serves to implement council's strategic target areas related to a high-quality built-in natural environment along with the climate and sustainability policies in the comprehensive plan, including some of the new policies in the climate and environment element. The five focus areas of the plan are consistent with the current plan and the plan continues to cover both strategies and actions for the entire city and then also for our city operations and demonstrating how we're leading by example in sustainability there, also with goals to achieve the carbon neutrality 10 years ahead of the rest of the community. As Tara mentioned, one thing that's a little different with this plan update is that we have the, the kind of overarching plan with the goals, targets, and strategies called the, you know, we're sometimes referring to that as the strategic plan. That's the attachment A for council adoption. And then we have a separate document. And then, we have a separate document, the Action Plan, which has more of the details of the various actions to achieve the goals and strategies in the plan. And then, one thing that'll be a little different with this is that we'll have a little more flexibility to update the action plan as needed as conditions change, you know, locally or at the federal or state level. So the model we're using here is kind of similar to how transportation structures the Vision Zero Plan, or the Vision Zero Strategic Framework and then Annual Action Plan. So kind of before we start to dive into some of the details of the plan, just a recap on some of the priorities we heard throughout our community engagement. This is through, we did two surveys where we heard from about 700 people in total. We did pretty, our team did a lot of student engagement, where we engaged with over 300 students in different classroom visits and meetings and workshops. And then, we had several in-person town halls, workshops, and open houses that engaged another 200 people. Some of the top priorities we heard from our community are shown here, including, you know, a desire to accelerate our climate action. One thing that's new in this plan update compared to five years ago is a much stronger interest from the community in climate resilience, you know, especially given how circumstances have changed over the past five years with the bomb cyclone, the heat dome, more frequent smoky days, that those issues are definitely more top of mind for a lot of our residents. From an equity standpoint, we heard, especially through a lot of our engagement with community-based organizations, a desire for increased access to transit, and a real understanding from the entire community that, you know, how we get around and how we get to work is really a critical piece of how we can reduce emissions. And then, also, we heard a really strong desire for people in multifamily buildings and renters to have access to a lot of the new programs and resources we have to reduce emissions. And then, the last thing I'll mention is an interest we've heard from council and also from, you know, both the business, community and our residents, is a desire to ensure that our grid is reliable as we move forward with electrifying our buildings and vehicles. People want to make sure, you know, that they'll still have power and that the grid can handle all of that. Some more specific feedback we heard on the draft plan. Some of these themes echo kind of the top priorities we heard really throughout the plan update process. You know, a desire for stronger actions, really focusing on cost-effective, high-impact actions, and monitoring the impact of what we're doing to make sure we're, you know, both accountable, but also making sure that we're, you know, really demonstrating what we're doing is having an impact. You know, we've received really a variety of different comments from kind of different perspectives. One of the other themes was really around what is the role of local government in climate action? And so you'll see a couple actions in the plan that sort of speak to that, both where there's a desire to maybe look at additional policy action the city could take, or, you know, maybe these are some strategies that might be better implemented at the state level. And then, you know, I think we've heard from our climate advocate folks, they've shared, you know, their proposed 12 actions. And so, we've done some work looking at kind of their proposals and crosswalking that with the actions in the plan, and sought to, you know, really incorporate their comments and feedback and address those in the action plan. So, yeah, before we kind of dive into the highlights of the plan, we also want to recap some of the feedback we heard from council at the last study session, and some of the kind of key priorities from council. We'll kind of walk you through a snapshot of the action plan, but I think you'll see in there a lot of the details address council's interest in understanding the cost estimates and the GHG reduction potential of the different actions. So with that, we can gauge kind of the cost-effectiveness of different actions, but also some of the co-benefits, since a lot of these strategies really have benefits beyond or in addition to reducing emissions. And then, in terms of the tracking progress, one thing that's different with this plan update is the implementation metrics we've added in. So in addition to reporting and tracking some of the bigger-picture outcomes like our greenhouse gas emissions or the community vehicle trips, vehicle miles traveled, things like that, we also want to look at what are some metrics that are more specific to our work and our programs that tie back to those bigger-picture outcomes, but are really more focused on, you know, what we're doing locally. So, you know, as we shared at the July presentation, in order to achieve our goals, we are reliant on full implementation of a number of mostly state policies and some federal policies, such as the Clean Energy Transformation Act at the state level. So this slide is kind of a more simplified version of the wedge analysis, but it illustrates, you know, the impact of state policies, and then the actions that, you know, we can take the lead on locally to get us to our long-term carbon neutrality goal. As we shared in July, you know, through our updated analysis, we're finding it's, you know, not likely that we could achieve a 50% reduction by 2030, but we do think it is possible to achieve that if the state policies are, you know, enacted as planned and we ramp up and implement the actions in our plan. We think it's possible to achieve that reduction by 2035, and then that will put us on the track for our long-term goal. And then, a couple things to highlight here. You know, in order to achieve our goals, that will require decarbonizing existing homes, commercial buildings, multifamily buildings. Some of these are really kind of long-term transformations that will take time, but we do want to get started on them now. And then, we'll also need to really look at reducing vehicle trips through, you know, continued and increased access to transit through pedestrian and bike infrastructure, and then also supporting the transition to electric vehicles. So, at the study session in July, we reviewed the strategies in the plan. I'll now kind of walk through just some example actions for each focus area just to highlight some of the kind of real key, high-impact strategies. The, you know, the goal for the climate change focus area is to achieve carbon neutrality and increase resiliency to the impacts of climate change. The strategies in the plan are categorized as priority, catalyst and resilient strategies. So acknowledging, you know, the priority strategies are things that can be implemented now or are already in progress, but we may need to scale them up. Catalyst strategies are strategies or actions that are really setting the stage for longer-term transformational emissions reductions. And then, the resilient strategies are, you know, focused more on building climate resilience in either the built-to-natural environment or with our residents. So for the climate focus area, I'll highlight a couple actions here, which also speak to some of the priorities we heard from our community around, you know, increased access to our various sustainability programs and resources for multifamily buildings, and then really a desire to enhance resilience in the community. Also kind of looking at how we might scale that up more in partnership with nonprofits throughout the community. For the energies and buildings focus area, the goal is to electrify buildings, increase energy efficiency and support the transition to renewable energy. There's a lot of detail in this focus area. I'll just highlight a couple kind of key, high-impact actions. The first one being to scale the Energy Smart Eastside Program, so this supports electrification of homes in Bellevue. We now have the infrastructure in place to really increase adoption of heat pumps, and we've seen some great results with the program so far. And then, what we've also found in some of our modeling is, you know, we have a program in place to support buildings in complying with the Washington State Clean Buildings Act, and we've helped a lot of over 200 buildings in Bellevue on the path towards compliance with that law. But we're also finding, based on some early data and some of our modeling, that that law may not go quite far enough, as is, to, you know, get us to our goal. And the intent with that law was always to, you know, have the rules and requirements for buildings evolve over time. So the second action there is really to look at additional building decarbonization policies that could either be implemented, you know, at the local level or at the state level to really build on the Clean Buildings Act requirements. And so that would be an example of one of the actions we would come back to council for, for further discussion and direction. On the mobility and land use side, a couple example actions here that speak to, you know, some of the community priorities are really to continue to expand transit access and walkability. You know, of course, not only important for reducing emissions, but also just for overall livability in the community. And then, also an interest in expanding first and last mile transit solutions such as Bellhop or the King County Metro Flex. And then, you know, of course, one of the challenges here is, you know, funding these various projects. So, you know, our Transportation Department has a lot of plans and projects in the pipeline, but the funding is obviously one of the biggest challenges here. On the waste and materials focus area, one of the, the goal here is to advance responsible consumption, procurement and disposal to achieve zero waste, which was also a priority from our community, especially looking at how we can increase recycling and composting opportunities in multifamily buildings. The upcoming Waste Haller RFP and new contract will present an opportunity to really look at how we can further our waste reduction and sustainability goals through that critical city service. And then, finally, for the natural systems, this also reflects, the example actions I'll highlight here also reflect priorities from both council and the community to look at how we might transition to electric yard equipment. That's one we're, you know, intending to come back to council on with more details on what that could look like for residents and commercial businesses in Bellevue. And then, last year, or excuse me, last time we updated the plan, tree preservation was really one of the top priorities for the community. We, council adopted the updated tree code last year. So one of the actions in the plan is to just continue monitoring how the updated code is doing and what the impacts are of that. So with that, I'll hand it over to Anna to talk through the municipal operations, strategies and example actions.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutien and council members. So the municipal operations framework mirrors the community in terms of our focus areas. And so we have similar strategies, but our goals are more aggressive, and we're targeting to achieve those goals at a faster rate than the community. So we're pleased to report that we have already achieved our 2030 goals. So we are operating below that target currently. So the focus of this plan update really has been on improving climate resiliency in municipal operations so that we can continue to provide critical services during climate emergencies and ensure that fleet can dispatch as needed. So that's new for this plan update in terms of municipal operations. So high-impact strategies that would, oops, sorry.
Oh, the big one.
Oh.
There you go.
Excuse me, sorry. So what that looks like in terms of high-impact strategy is to ensure that our backup generators can support our fleet electrification, building electrification, and just make sure that our critical services and fleet can dispatch during emergency situations. So that's a new focus area or focus of this plan update. To maintain efficiency and achieve our 2040 targets, we need to focus on building and fleet electrification. So in order to do that, we are completing construction through 2026 at five different facilities to deploy EV charging stations so that departments can continue to purchase electric vehicles. We're also conducting assessments at our city-owned facilities to determine if new electrical transformers are required to support the electrical upgrades needed to convert our natural gas equipment to electric as well as support fleet electrification across our city-owned facilities. So those are the three main actions that we need to take in order to continue on track to achieve our 2030 targets and to achieve our long-range 2040 targets. Thank you.
So, one other aspect that's new with this plan update is the section we have on foundational strategies, which speak to both the community and municipal operations goals. And so, these really look at, these strategies really help us look at how we can further embed climate and sustainability into city processes and decision-making. You know, as we've heard from the community, there's a strong desire in looking at how we can scale up our climate action. And, you know, we've included some estimates of costs in the action plan. We're also, we've included an action in the plan to look at exploring additional funding options for the plan implementation. So this slide provides a snapshot of the action plan, which I can just kind of walk you through. As I mentioned, the priority strategies are strategies we can start to work on now. We've also included a status for the various actions to really kind of highlight or underscore what are some of the things we already have ongoing, but we may need to scale them up or expand them, or, you know, there are some actions that are new. And then, we have the catalyst strategies, which are, strategies or actions that will require further analysis, community and stakeholder engagement, and then future direction from council on new policy issues. The dollar signs, there's more details in the action plan, but those indicate the range of costs. We'll be looking at refining those cost estimates further as part of the budget process. And then, like, as I mentioned earlier, the implementation metrics for each strategy really speak to how we're gonna measure the impact of the specific actions. So we have more real-time data on how we're doing. And then, finally, the timeline indicates actions that we can really start work on next year. There's a number of things we have slated for next year, or there's some actions that, you know, might require additional funding in the upcoming budget for '27 and '28. So, in summary, I do want to highlight that, you know, we have been working on implementing the current plan over the past five years, and we have a lot of exciting work planned for next year as part of the '25-'26 budget process. In particular, relaunching the Clean Buildings Incentive Program, expanding that program to support more small and medium-sized buildings. We'll also be launching a new electric vehicle technical assistance program to help multifamily buildings take advantage of different incentives and programs to install EV charging infrastructure. And then, we're looking at expanding the Energy Smart Eastside Program to include weatherization assistance, and then continuing a lot of the great work on the municipal operations side to really continue to decarbonize our facilities and prepare for electrifying our fleet. As I mentioned, we'll, you know, the plan is to come back or to continue to work on refining the cost estimates, and then, as part of the biennial budget process, we'll come back with proposals for how we can implement the high-impact strategies in the plan. And then, we'll continue to report to council twice a year on our progress, and then really kind of focusing on those implementation metrics so we can kind of gauge our impact more in real time. And then, really, last but not least, we'll continue a lot of the engagement we've been doing with the community and are excited to look at what kind of comes next as we switch back into, you know, really focusing on implementation and how we can continue to engage community or our residents, businesses and various stakeholders in Bellevue. So, yeah, that concludes our presentation. We're happy to take any questions or comments. And, yeah, we'll just reiterate that we are looking, or requesting council to consider directing staff to bring the plan back for adoption at a future meeting. Thank you.
Okay, so just to clarify, tonight, we're discussing approval of the Sustainable Bellevue Plan, which includes goals, targets and strategies. We're not talking about specific actions or budget. That's gonna come back later. And so, did you tell us when you're gonna come back later with those things, action items, and a budget for them?
So the budget, budget conversation will occur as part of the '27-'28 budget process. So that will happen in 2026 in advance of- So, that will happen in 2026 in advance of that council approving the budget.
Okay, you did on the last slide talk about reviewing the biennial budget. So, that made me think you might come back this year. Nope, okay.
No.
Just wanted to clarify.
Just to clarify, not, not as part of the mid-buy process, but as part of the next budget process, so '27, '28 budget process, we will come back.
Can you go back one slide? Oh, sure. Let me just see what that said.
And we will, we will be doing, I think what this says is semi-annual progress reporting, so we'll be coming back to council with progress that we've been, that has been made on the plan that ultimately gets adopted by council.
Okay, that looks great. Thank you. So, let's start off with our deputy mayor, since you are our representative on K4C.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, Jennifer, Tara, Anna, nice to meet you again. Whenever someone from finance and asset management here, I'm very happy. Thank you, Emil. Extensive work on a very, very comprehensive plan. You guys are working a year on this, and I think no one can deny your truth, your commitment behind this. It seems we are in the path to be a leadership in sustainability, so I'm very, very happy about that. And I think your work shows the balance between the climate action with fiscal responsibility, and I loved hearing, seeing that. And also, you are involving community along the journey. It's really good to see that we are planning on and building on our past success and opportunities that we had in the last five years, and also adding some layers of accountability, equity, and measuring the outcomes that the goal is to reach the goal of 2030, 2040, 2050. I also love that you went to the high schools and you talked to 300. That's awesome. I think they are going to live here longer than us, and I think it's amazing that you are involving those people that usually don't have that much voice in sustainability policy decision. I also like that you are integrating our feedback and community feedback on both metrics and cost transparency. I think it's great that I'm seeing those in the action items because that lead us to be measurable, result-driven, environmental leaders that we want to be. I also really appreciate your categories, priority strategies, catalyst strategies, resilient strategies. I think I like those categories, near-term, long-term, and of course, infrastructure and people and ecosystem for climate. The last thing that I love, but then I'm going to have some question, is I really appreciate that you are involving planning, transportation, utilities, finance. It is coordination of the one city that you guys talk about, and that's completely reflected, here across all of the departments, because sustainability, as you know better than me, can just be an environmental program. It is, need to be integrated into every major decision that we make as a city. I have four questions. Two of them are very short, just walk me through, and you mentioned some of them, but walk me through some of my understanding. The People for Climate Action gave us a document, a folder, they gave it to me, the hard copy, they emailed me, I think I forwarded it to you all. There were 12 critical city climate action, and you said you are going to integrate that into the action plan that is coming. Can you elaborate more on this? There were lots of good stuff there. I glanced on it, but there were many chapters, there were some budget proposal and how we can even fund for all of these. How are we integrating this to our plan?
So, I can start off, and then Jennifer can add more detail. So, wanted to also highlight, we really appreciate the engagement from the People for Climate Action. They've been very, very involved throughout the process, and we've been meeting with them as well throughout the process. And really, I think their 12, proposed 12 climate actions were really helpful. We heard similar feedback from other, other forms of engagement and through our various engagement opportunities throughout the process too, whether it was surveys, outreach efforts, focus groups, things like that. And a lot of our strategies really do integrate some of their climate actions. We actually met with them last week and walked through, you know, their, their 12 actions and how they integrated with our overall sustainability plan, and I'll let Jennifer kind of talk through some of the specifics.
Yeah, so I think all 12 of the, their actions are reflected, you know, to an extent, maybe we've framed the actions slightly differently than, than they have, but I think the intent is there. There are a couple actions in our plan where, you know, they would require further policy analysis, engagement, and council direction. So, you know, there's some pretty big policy recommendations they have that would just take, you know, further engagement in Bellevue to, for council to, to determine if that's where you want to go. But, yeah, I think the, the intent is certainly there, and it definitely helped kind of shape our thinking around some of the different actions as we were kind of getting feedback from, from different community members and, and looking at what other cities are doing and that sort of thing.
So, when you come back with actions and all of those, after all of those engagements, we will see all of those 12 somehow incorporated in your actions? That's, am I hearing you correct?
The 12 are incorporated in the action plan. There's just a couple actions where I think the PCA maybe would have wanted us to go a bit further, and we're saying we need to do some further analysis and come back to council.
That's great. Thank you so much. The other, my second question that is, at some point, we need to engage all of our community and stakeholders, and we need to incentivize them, we need to change some of our behaviors, we all need to be educated. Is that in part of your action that you are going to do incentivizing some education program? I don't know, some neighborhood challenges, some sustainability pledges, and all of those rewards, and is that going to be part of the action plan?
Yeah, definitely. The, I mean, the community engagement is definitely a big component that really underpins all of the work, but then is also kind of a, a real focus in and of itself. I think, you know, as we kind of shift in, back into focusing on the implementation with our outreach in particular, we want to kind of reevaluate, you know, how best to expend our resources to have the greatest impact with that. We've also, I think, really built some great relationships with different community-based organizations to help us reach kind of more diverse community members. So, want to also follow up with a lot of the organizations and stakeholders we've engaged with to really work with them to understand how they want to continue to be engaged or what their ideas are for how they can maybe help us reach their communities better. So, yes, that's definitely a big part. We've also heard some interest in, in more engagement with, with neighborhood organizations. So, I think we, you know, need to do a little more strategizing on how best to go about that, but definitely interested in, in doing more of that.
Great. Now, I think my main two questions, and I think let's just talk about a little bit, maybe very optimistic. Assume state PSC, all of our regional partner come true, and they do all of their commitments. And assume you come to the council with all of those actions, allocated budget, and we support that. With these current strategies, can we deliver, deliver our 2050 goals? If all of those, not in our control, factors successfully be achieved, by what you outline as a strategy for us, can we get to the goal that we have for 2050?
Thank you for that question. Very comprehensive question for us to think about, but I'd say, yeah, the framework that we have put forward really has focused on looking forward to 2050, really, as you highlighted, our approach with catalyst strategies, priority strategies, and the resilience, that really intended to achieve that far-reaching 2050 goal.
And what is our confidence level? Because again, I know there are uncertainties that we are going to see. But as of this moment that you are presenting this great work, again, you are at the strategy level, you come back with your action items, with allocated budget, what is your confidence level in projecting that we are going to reach a 2050 goal?
I think one of the, one of the reasons we, we came up with this different framework to have council adopt the strategic plan and then have the action plan be something that, that's more nimble and something we can update, is really, is really intended to address that. So, knowing that we are in a very dynamic environment, that things are changing, and will give us an opportunity to really adapt some of our actions. And then as Jennifer walked through the various implementation metrics, that's going to really be our guiding tool to see how are we doing, are we making good progress, and then are there things we need to, we need to change to really meet our 2050 goal? Jennifer, anything you want to add on?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we're confident that these are the right actions for us to be doing, but this is also a five-year plan. So, I think, you know, if all the stars align with the state level and everything, you know, we think these actions can help get us on track to achieve our goals, but it is difficult to kind of look all the way out to 2050. We can't really say, oh, you know, so much can change between now and then, and there'll be new technologies. So, we're confident, you know, for the next five years, these are the right actions, but the way the plan is structured, we also have some ability to update the action plan if necessary to, to pivot as, you know, circumstances might change.
So, this, let's just talk about the strategy before we go to action. So, strategy that you outlined here, that I know there are actions beneath it, is the strategy we have, we are confident, because some of this strategy is for longer term because we don't even see the result of some of this. It's a very long-term, I think, the, the impact would be materialized in a long term. But at the strategy level, you are confident, I'm hearing you are confident that this is all the right strategy and to get to our 2050 goals.
Yes.
Great. And I think you are kind of touching my second and my final question. And I think I saw a lot of good stuff in your sample slide that you had at that action. But can you elaborate on our framework for tracking, for reporting on implementation metrics? We know our, we are not probably hitting our 2030 goal, targets will be very stretched if we do. So, how are we making sure that we are going to be nimble, we are going to have some report mechanism to us that, hey, that five-years plan, we are, what I'm trying to avoid is we come back five years from now and we say, okay, unfortunately, we are not going to hit our now 2050 goals. How we are going to notify all of this progress and the direction sooner than later, although I know it's hard because some of our data is lagging and it's very hard to measure some of this stuff. But what is our framework? Can you elaborate more on that?
Yeah, I think, well, our implementation metrics are certainly going to feed into that, and then let Jennifer talk, talk about more details. But in addition, we're intending to come back to council with an annual update, so that will give us an opportunity to really provide council with progress that we've made. And, you know, we'll, we'll continue on with our greenhouse gas inventory reporting, so that will be a good barometer for how we're doing in terms of progress. And then as new technology and new actions present themselves, those are things we can, we can start thinking about as innovative opportunities.
Yeah, I think with the implementation metrics, we'll be kind of revisiting our approach to reporting, so we want to try to make it clear and digestible how, you know, the projects and programs we're working on kind of tie into our overall outcomes that we're trying to impact. So, yeah, I think that in general, we'll be reporting on both the more sort of project and program-specific metrics along with the, the outcome metrics. We're going to be looking at kind of how we can refresh some of our reporting structures so the framework, you know, compared to what we've been using over the past five years might, you know, evolve a bit, but that's the overall intent.
Thank you. My only last comment on this is, I think the implementation metric is different to me, again, correct me if I'm wrong, to the outcome metric. I remember in the first five years of plan, you achieved lots of those 37, I don't know how many it was, you achieved lots of them. But that curve is going in a wrong direction. So, I just wanted to caution you that implementation metrics doesn't correlate to that curve comes back to what we want on 2030 goal and 2050 goal. So, we need to have more output metrics, more emphasize on that, maybe even each six months. Again, I know our data is not there, but we need to make sure that this five-years plan, strategy, action plans is taking us to where our goal is as a leader, hopefully, a city that is a leader in sustainability. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hamilton.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. Certainly appreciate the comments from the deputy mayor. I kind of feel like he was copying off my papers, so I think many of my comments are right along with what he was talking about. I would like a little bit of a clarification though, because we, we have the strategies in place, so that's all in the, the action plan. But as far as strategies, what exactly is going to come back as it relates to strategies? What are you going to bring back to us? Because I see a lot of, a lot of things defined here. This seems pretty clear to me, but as it relates to strategies, what comes back?
So, yeah, council will be, you know, deciding to move to adoption for the, the strategic plan, which includes the goals and strategies and targets. And then really, a lot of our reporting and work will focus on those strategies, and then the action plan is really more of the specifics on what we're going to do and when and how.
Okay. Good. And I, I know that there's just generally a hesitation about making really firm commitments, but when we talk about reaching our goals, I think it's important that we just say, yes, we're going to do it, we are committed to doing it. We may not do it, but at this point, we are fully committed, and we may fail. We're going to adjust along the way, we're going to keep, you know, refining and getting better, but I think we have to be fully committed, and we have to just be open to not actually meeting the target because I just think the stakes are so high. And I appreciate that that's not an easy thing to do. I like to be right all the time, doesn't happen. This is really critical stuff, so I know it's a hard thing to, to commit to, but I think it's really important that we do it. So, I just want to mention that. Really appreciate the presentation. It's clear that you've incorporated council feedback and community feedback into the updated plan. I think it's great, clearly, I mean, you have listened, you've made thoughtful adjustments to the plan to ensure we meet our goals, even if it takes longer than we want to do so. I think it's worth emphasizing the importance of these goals, as a vast majority of our community members have been very clear that climate change is a very important issue, and they want us to take bold action to combat it. I am pleased that we're prioritizing resilience to the impacts of climate change, and we're going to have to be prepared to react to climate impacts that are headed our way. And so, while we work hard to create policies that help us make progress on achieving our climate goals, that ensure that future generations can thrive in a safe and healthy environment, we also have to be ready to respond to the unavoidable trouble that our community will encounter along the way to reaching our goals. I really like that the five focus areas end with a what you can do section. So, while we are rightly taking the lead in combating climate change, it'll take a concerted effort by the entire community to reach our goals. I think the what you can do section points residents, organizations, and businesses in a direction to take action. Essentially, they can create their own sustainability checklist, engage their own progress. Love seeing that you, seeing the Choose Your Way Bellevue program highlighted. The program is in place now. The chooseyourwaybellevue.org website has a lot of useful information about how to reduce the climate impact of transportation choices, and they'll even provide a free customized commute plan for folks. I think the city has done a great job in leading by example and seized many opportunities to reduce overall municipal greenhouse gas emissions. We are leaning into our responsibility to reduce the GHG emissions that we have direct connection. We are leaning into our responsibility to reduce the GHG emissions that we have direct control of. I'm glad that you've done such a good job of reducing municipal GHG emissions and you've set ambitious goals to achieve further reductions. I would like to see us share all that we have learned and will learn from our municipal efforts, reduction efforts, work with other similarly sized and complex organizations in the city. Just a question for you. I'm aware that almost half of our city staff use climate-friendly options for getting to work. But if we considered, and maybe we, we have it in place, I haven't had a chance to check, providing financial support to staff to support our M2 strategy of encouraging sustainable commutes and business travel?
Oh, is that for municipal operations?
Just for, no, I mean commuting. Do we give ORCA cards? Do we do stuff to, I mean, we have the light rails going to be stopping right outside?
Absolutely. Yeah, we, we participate in the Commute Trip Reduction Program. And we do have a high rate of employees that are, have, that have sustainable commutes, meaning that they're walking, biking, busing. We do expect that to increase once the light rail opens and connects to Seattle. That will significantly reduce those emissions. So I think there's a lot of positive outlooks to come from that. So that is something that we're tracking and we do support ORCA cards for employees as well. And, yeah, so there's, there's a lot of opportunity to reduce emissions from employee needs.
That's great. I think we're doing great already at almost 50%, but some more would be great. Also too, I just appreciate in the action plan, giving us an idea of the price tag of the actions we're taking and will consider to take in the future. We know that there will be trade-offs and it's critical that we understand the costs when deciding on the trade-offs. The metrics in the action plan represent a significant commitment to achieving our climate goals. We're clear about the goals and who has taken the lead in achieving them, and I think that's great. We're committed to a timeframe for achieving them, the range of cost to achieve one, and the expected impact of each action. We are putting it all on the line. It's a big commitment and we are being transparent along the way. We're holding ourselves accountable and encouraging the community to do so too. It's worth noting that many of the medium and high-impact strategies are in the lowest-cost column. The action plan is detailed, reasonable, impactful, and measurable. I think this is a great body of work and look forward to hearing from my colleagues and moving the plan forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a time check. We still have a whole another study session item tonight. So maybe we can keep our comments to five minutes as we max, as we go down the line here. Councilmember Newenhouse?
Thank you, Mayor. Plus one to Councilmember Hamilton's comments, plus one to the deputy mayor's comments. I'll get right down to my, my one issue with this. But thank you so much for the great presentation, Anna and Tara and Jennifer. Thank you. My, so tonight we're being asked to direct you to prepare the Sustainable Bellevue Plan for Action at a future meeting. But my, my, my biggest concern is that we still haven't seen what has been mentioned. At least not to my degree of satisfaction is the, the, the cost effectiveness. I appreciate that that'll come back in, in the future. But if you're asking us to pass a plan and we still don't know where we're going to garner the greatest results by putting money into certain strategies. And I, and I, and I get to, and I get concerns when, when I hear that the strategies are the same. There are some new strategies, but as, as you mentioned, a lot of the strategies are the same. We're just going to double down on them. But we're missing our goals. So is doubling down really be effective strategy? In some case, it might be. I guess what I'm all, all I'm asking for is show the math in terms of the strategies, what the income. Because I want to see the greatest cost-benefit analysis out of this. And I want to make sure, because we are making a big investment. And, and, and I want to make sure that we're putting that investment into the right strategies and the right tools. So we're hopefully not sitting here in 2050. Well, we won't be sitting here, but we might be sitting somewhere else. And, and we've missed these targets again. So that's, that's my biggest concern. I would love just to, to get your thoughts on that because that's really what I'm looking for. Especially as we're looking at new, new revenue plans. And, and this is a big issue for not only the stakeholders here, but the residents and businesses in, in general. And they're willing to invest in this plan, but they also want to make sure that there is that cost effectiveness there. And that this is actually really moving the needle and we're actually going to hit our goals. So that's, that's my question to you if you want to. It might be more of a comment, but still, I would like to get your thoughts on it.
Yeah, so really, really important question. And we've been, you know, we've heard this from council. Even at, we spent a lot of time talking about this at the July study session. What we've, what we have, what we've presented to council tonight really does highlight what we think are the most important or impactful strategies. And we did that, we went into some detail as part of our July study session as well. Council was really interested in understanding what are the strategies that are going to move the needle, are going to get us to that 2050 target. And, and then as Jennifer highlighted, and we can go back to that slide if that's helpful. Just all the various actions that support each of the strategies that will get us to that target as well as the cost differentials, the cost range. And of course, as part of the 2728 budget process, we'll be coming back to council with specific budget proposals that support some of these actions. Jennifer, did you want to add on there?
Yeah, no, I, I think that mostly covers it. I, I think, you know, just kind of by way of example, even for each action, there are different, you know, different ways we could potentially look at implementing them. And how, you know, if we were to, you know, use the funding we have or increase the funding, how we would want to invest that. And, you know, the extent to which we maybe want to focus on equity and resilience and GHG emissions also always kind of shapes, you know, sort of the design of different programs or actions. So, you know, as we kind of, we're starting to think about it now, you know, some ideas for the upcoming, the 2728 budget where we'll, you know, really continue to refine other recommendations on the cost effectiveness sort of within each action, if that makes sense. So in general, these are, you know, the actions we think we should be working on. And we'll just continue to kind of refine sort of the best approach for those, you know, for, for the ones we've already started working on. Really kind of reviewing progress and looking at what's the most cost-effective way to move these forwards. And then similar for some of the newer actions as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Barghava?
Okay. We're trying to keep much up to five or less for sure. So first of all, thank you, Anna, Jennifer, Tara. This is a really great presentation. I think you've taken so much of the feedback that you've received and converted into a more thoughtful plan that I think is, is really a big step forward. So kudos to you. I, I really think the conversation so far focused on sort of the return on investment. So I'm not going to go deep here because I think a lot has been said here. But the idea of sort of an ROI-based approach is really great. And I do recognize, bless you, the conundrum of this problem is we don't know which inputs are actually going to come to fruition. We also don't know, because some of them are not controllable by us. And we also don't know which ones are going to be effective because you're really driving the inputs and greenhouse gas emissions are an output of those inputs. And so best intentions over the last five years of getting to the outputs haven't gotten us there. So it's a really difficult problem. So I appreciate that challenge that we have here. I think the way around or the path forward that might help here, just thoughts, is focusing on the local controllable inputs, which I think you talked about in your strategy, which I think is a really great first step. While also encouraging and partnering and evolving on the external inputs that we don't control as much that may have a large impact on our strategic direction. But I also think the continuous process of evolution that you talk about today, much more so about switching from inputs if you don't see the impacts coming through and the flexibility that you defined in your plan, I think is one of those really important principles that we have to latch on to because focus on the inputs and if the inputs don't work, change the inputs because you really want to move the output and not get locked into the implementation plans that I think the deputy mayor was talking about as well, right? So that's a, I think it's a really good suggestion and we should, you know, internalize that and, and as we go forward. The other thing I really appreciate is also the focus on climate resilience and community engagement. Because those can be, one, climate resilience is often overlooked in our larger sustainable strategies. So that is a really good input for us to evolve. And the community engagement can also help improve our measurement and our feedback on things that are easy to implement and have the highest impact of the ROI on the output metrics we're trying to move. So I think that's a really good suggestion. I love the idea of establishing additional metrics and measurements because, and I agree that there is to be a, I actually think as much of a real-time analysis on our inputs and metrics as possible. Like you talk about a biannual or annual cycle of review. I think the ones that we can control and we can actually put out, that we can measure in real time, what the impacts are going to be as we move the inputs on the output allows us to have higher confidence in the investments we're making, higher confidence in the plans we're trying to get partnerships to execute on, et cetera. And one of the things I would suggest is, for example, a cost metric, which you may have already gotten, but a greenhouse gas metric tons reduced per dollar invested at the aggregate level and at the input level. So that we can then to Councilmember Newenhouse's point, be sure that our initial estimates on ROI, are they tracking? Are they, should, should we double down on something? Should we walk away from something? And that's really helpful, sort of a nimble process. And it's not going to be as nimble as that, as I describe it. But, you know, as the slow-moving boat we can turn, we make that turn possible. You know, because this is a tough thing. So I'll bring it to two questions that I had. My first question is, we've seen really great performance on the municipal side, Anna. So great job. But we're still behind our targets besides, even though we've exceeded our inputs. Are we actually on track to deliver the outcomes from a greenhouse gas reduction standpoint for those municipal operations investments that we expected? Or is it the mix of how much we're investing in our municipal operations versus community strategies that we should rethink a little bit? Because if it exceeding on these inputs but not beating our plan, should be prioritized. Similar to the thought process we've had so far. So that's one. I'll say both my questions out and you can choose to respond. And the second one is, while we make really incremental improvements across this, you know, whether it's slowly electrification of our municipal and residential buildings, moving from, you know, combustion engines to electric vehicles. And these are slow-moving transitions we have to make as people adopt technologies and change behaviors. And waste management has the same kind of predicament to it. Should we be thinking about some found, like you had a foundational piece here, but like foundational investments that we know have a step-function impact on greenhouse gas? And one example that came to mind to me was like district energy and heating and cooling is a, requires strong public-private partnership, requires investment, requires thoughtful orchestration. But that's a foundational investment that we know over time will lead to a step-function change. Should we be and have you been thinking about that? So those are my two questions.
Sure. I can start with municipal operations. So for municipal operations, yes, we are currently achieving our GHG reduction target. When we break it down into focus area, mobility, our fleet electrification is, is our biggest challenge. And that's widely because of the lack of electrical infrastructure at our city-owned facilities to support the capacity needed to provide electric vehicle charging. So that's, that's the greatest opportunity to achieve our 2040 targets. So as I mentioned, we're currently under construction to, to allow that EV purchasing to happen. And the way that we're able to do that cost-effectively is that a lot of the current market EV replacements that are available now are comparable to the gas-powered vehicles. So it's not a huge marginal increase in that cost. So we can look at used options and leasing options as well. So there's some opportunity there. And so we'll, if we continue to implement at the rate that we are and continue to do our long-term, long-range planning and investments, then we will continue to hit our 2040 targets. For municipal operations, it's a little bit easier to directly associate our project work, our action work to our strategies. So we can roll up our greenhouse gas emissions. We can measure the, the greenhouse gas savings and costs of converting to EVs. So that's a little bit easier for us to report at that level. And then the other question, or to answer your question from earlier, the Long Range and Sustainability Planning Division is moving into the Budget Office so that we can also flag the budget proposals that do have efficiency component, components and ROI components or utility savings so that we can also try to track that at a better level. So that gives us a little bit more visibility and insight to, to how we can report and track the cost-effectiveness of our investments and how that relates to greenhouse gas emissions. So it's a little bit more specific for municipal operations. I'll let Jennifer speak to the community.
Yeah, I think for, from the perspective of the foundational investments, I think some of that can, you know, happen more at like a policy level. That's sort of the foundation. And then I think for some of our programs, you know, it has taken a little time from when the current Sustainable Bellevue Plan was adopted at the end of 2020 to get, for instance, Energy Smart Eastside stood up and fully functioning, you know, to put all the partnerships in place and everything. So I guess I kind of look at a lot of that work as sort of a foundational investment to really kind of scale the program.
And then I'd also say, and Councilmember Barghava, your role when you were on the Planning Commission and the work on the Wilberton Vision Implementation, that really did provide the framework for a sustainable district. And so we've completed work on Phase One of the Wilberton Sustainable District, which includes assessing what are some of the opportunities that we could be exploring. And so now we're really embarking on what does that look like in terms of implementing some of that visioning? And so we have been in conversations with King County on potentially looking at sewer heat recovery options. So there are multiple things that are, that are being explored right now. So more to come.
Yeah, much appreciate that. Mayor, if I could take 10 more seconds?
Yes.
So, so really appreciate that second part of the response. I want to go back to the initial response on the EV and the infrastructure we're building and the fleet transition. That's great. But my larger point was, is that investment on its own going to yield our biggest return on greenhouse gas? Like would the EV transition for municipal operations and the investments to create electric charging stations and fleet transitions yield the highest investment? Or should we direct some of those dollars? Again, that's not my suggestion. I'm just in evaluation, right? Thought, thought exercise. Should we direct some of those dollars towards community strategies that may have a larger impact on the output? That's all. That's my, that's not a question, just a comment.
Yeah, if we do not invest in our GHG reductions for mobility and fleet, then we will not hit our 2040 targets. So in order to hit our 2040 targets, we need to target fleet, fleet efficiency. So whether that's through electrification or some other strategy. We have moved forward with the fleet electrification and invested in that, but it has to continue to roll out. Otherwise, we will not hit the 2040 targets. And we certainly may not hit 2030 targets if we don't, we need to continue with the construction that we're currently is underway. And then that sets the stage to further adoption. So it's, it is a long-range plan because it, it takes a while for departments and that transition to happen to fill the EV stations. So building the EV stations allow departments to continue purchasing. But if we don't do that, no, we will not hit our target.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry to not be clear.
Councilmember Suma Duriya?
Wow, I don't want to ask such precautions. I don't know what to do. But thank you. I really loved the presentation of the, how do you, the Sustainable Action Plan? Because the table is so clear. And, you know, one thing I want to ask about, because on each strategy, there is clear matrix of investment type, is the dollar we're going to be spending and then the impact, right, the low, medium, high. Is there, are we going to prioritize the one that's like, you know, the golden child, which is like, you know, low on go, like low cost versus high impact? How we, are we prioritizing which strategy to use first?
Yeah, good question. I think as we, you know, work on our work plans for next year and then, you know, as part of the 2728 budget process, that and then, you know, as part of the 27, 28 budget process, that will be a, you know, a big part of that, thinking about where, where our efforts, um, best spent in, in terms of sort of cost effectiveness of the different strategies and actions. So you'll see that kind of coming back in our work plan for next year in terms of what we're focusing on. And then as we look at, you know, proposals for the 27, 28 budget process.
Thank you. And then, you know, another question is, when I look at the presentation, I see the word resilience come quite often. And we know that's really important in every element of the community. But in this plan, what is the ideal setting? Like, how do you define resilience for the, especially the vulnerable community groups?
Oh, good question. Um, I forget the exact language we have in the plan for how we define it. But I, you know, it's basically, I think, the ability of, you know, our community, our infrastructure, our natural environment to be kind of prepared for the impacts of climate change and then to be able to bounce back when there is some sort of climate impact. Um, is, is how we define it. But then I think, you know, you can look at that from the perspective of vulnerable communities, you know, our natural environment, like our trees and streams, you know, et cetera. So I think kind of at a high level, that same definition kind of makes sense to be prepared for the impacts of climate and then to bounce back. But I think as we look at vulnerable communities, I think we could, um, you know, there might be a less technical way of defining what that means. And really kind of as we continue the engagement with, um, with our community based organization partners. I think, you know, we do want to be sensitive to kind of the terminology that resonates with people and what the meaning is. And so I, I think that's kind of a good topic for sort of further conversation as we talk about, um, enhancing resilience as part of the plan implementation.
Okay, and that lead to my next question, because I'm looking at the survey, um, outreach. And then, you know, it's saying the race ethnicity, people of color in Bellevue is almost 60%. But the survey responded with less than 20%. So for the next, you know, next phase, um, in order for us to reach the most frontline, most vulnerable frontline community, like what is the new action plan? How can we engage differently so we can get more response?
Yeah, good question. I, I think we put a lot of effort into trying to, you know, hear from a diverse group of residents as part of the plan update. And then again, as part of the plan implementation, that's definitely a priority. So I think, you know, as, you know, after we wrap up this phase of work, I think we really want to, um, develop a plan for next year for how we can continue to really diversify who we're engaging with. But I think we've built up some great relationships with different partner organizations that we're excited to, um, build on in the future. And I, we've also been really working with our cultural outreach assistance quite a bit at a lot of our different outreach events to, um, you know, continue to diversify or support, you know, more diverse engagement, but, um, always looking at how we can continue to improve on that.
Thank you. And then my last comment is more like a comment, because I think from what I'm studying and that you presented, which is a really great presentation, thank you for working with us after hours went dark already. Um, I would say, I think there is all these elements of tasks are interconnected. I saw one of the comment was a parent was saying the kid wanted to go to Kid Interlake, but they don't have reliable bus, right? So I think these are the things that I think different departments, we can work together collaboratively, focus on like, you know, transportation reliance and then also the engagement that you can work with like neighborhood, community outreach, outreach groups. I feel like when we work together as a whole team from the city, I think the outcome will be moving for, fast forward. And I want to really give you praise working with the people from Climate Action, all so many different stakeholders. Because I think those voices is really help us to move, see the picture in a more holistic way. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Lee.
Well, I want to compliment on you, uh, for doing this major, major, very big issue. Uh, you know, we tried to, uh, oh, work on this in a nice, nice neat little package. Uh, I really appreciate all the questions the council member, my colleague has been asking. I mean, asking a lot more details. And I think that shows how complicated, what a monumental job you have to do, you know, to come up with the final resolution, you know, nicely packed. Of course, you want to do is you plan something and you decide on the actions. Then you set up some results you expected, okay? But this is not just a neatly packaged deal. You don't know what's going to happen until you get to it. It's like any innovative ideas, any innovative project, you don't get all done right at once. You do it step by step. When you do the first step, you find out what's on the next step, what are the things you have to do to make sure you can accomplish, go to the next step. So it takes a lot of flexibility, a lot of different, you know, you set the result. You cannot say that we want to get it done by when. You cannot look at other places to say, well, what have you done before so we can kind of emulate? You cannot do that, you know, because you don't know what you're going to get into. So I don't think it's a neatly packaged deal. So my suggestion is, you need to do it, pick some important cost benefit. That's all the good question asks. Pick something that you know you can prioritize. Pick the project you can do and you can get some result quickly. And then you can see what's the next step. It may point you to the right direction, the next direction. Each step you take, you're building a foundation, you make a step. Ultimately, you show results. People will say, hey, you are making progress. Eventually, all the little progress, little steps can become a major thing. May not solve all those problems, but at least you will accomplish something that will actually help you to achieve your goal. But if you don't do that, you just say, well, let's do this, let's get a result. How do you know what the result would be ultimately? You don't know. And if you do all the things you want to do, you know, you can set the plan, sure. It's not that hard. I mean, it's hard, but you can set the plan if you want to. And you can actually expect action. You've done a good job. You've laid it out. You've considered each step. That's good. But you don't know what's going to happen after you get it done. You have no idea. Because why? Because you have to have, you don't, wait. Ultimately, to do something, people already ask, what's the cost benefit? You don't know what the cost is. When we deliberate on a budget, the next, next year, two years, how much are we going to ask? How much can you prove that you're going to get result? You, you ask it $10, a million dollars, a billion dollars? What are we going to get at the end of whichever period it is? We don't know. So my suggestion is, we cannot just say, well, live on the hope, live on the maybe we'll get something after we spend so much money. We've got to say, in the short term, what is the, people have suggested EV may be the right thing to do. Something, I like your, your separation of municipal and community. We can control municipal. Maybe we should start there. I've been asking, let's do our EV program. Let's change our fleet into electric. Let's do things, we can control our own building. Let's do there. You know, I think we can show some results, they do more, do more. Then we can work with the private sector, say, look, we have done that, you can do that, everybody start doing that. Then the result will actually justify what are we going to do, then we can show progress. Otherwise, if you're just jumping around here and there, you're not going to get the money you need. You know, if you, I don't know. So it's a question mark, but you cannot running around in blind. You've got to make sure you know what to do. So I like all the things to talk about cost effectiveness, absolutely. But how do you know it's cost effectiveness? Because you don't know what ending you're going to get, what's the result you're going to really get. We're going to spend a billion dollars, we say, oh, we're going to clean up emission rate, change to zero. Are we going to do that? You don't know, right? So, so it becomes maybe something cost effective, but by the time you get there, within the speed of time, within 2030, 2050, we don't know that. You know, you're not going to last long before we say, hey, you are not doing the job, we're going to shut it down. That's what happens. People's idea may change. So I believe we need to set priorities, pick up something that easily, that being accomplished, that we know can be accomplished, that we talked to other people, we learned from others, that this has to be done, it could be done. Let's start from there. So we can then talk to the council, say, we can do this because other people have done that and we can do it because we have control over it. Let's figure out how much money does it take and let's get that done. So you talk about one thing that makes it even more difficult, you're starting throwing things like equity in it. If we put equity in a project, what kind of result, what can I expect? I don't know. Right? And so somebody goes there, no, it is not equitable. It is equitable. You're not going to prove it. No matter how much money you spend, doesn't matter. So I believe that we need to take into consideration of learning things as we move forward, set priorities, things we can accomplish based on other people's experience, based on our own experience, based on what we can actually control. Many things we cannot control that we talked about, right? Because we don't know, we haven't done that before. If we do things we can control, let's, let's, uh, you know, when he says, somebody said depend on others. But many things we cannot depend on this. A lot of projects, we have to depend on others. I think somebody made that statement. If it's all us, we can do better, we, we can more have certainty. If we depend on others, which there are many, many things we depend on others. We're talking about regulations, we're talking about what, you know, I mean, lots of stuff we talked about. If we have depend on others, how can we control it? How do we know the result's going to be, right? We don't know. How much money is going to cost? We don't know. So gas, how can we run and operate and succeed and tell people that, tell the public that we're making progress? We're spending our money right. And the people that are supporting, asking for, for, uh, for environmental stewardship. It's rightfully, we all want that. If they don't see us doing it, they're questioning us, right? We've been spending the last many years. So how can, we, we keep saying, oh, we set something, go for 2030, something 2050. People say, what have you done? What have you done? Let's do something, let's do something, let's do something next year, two years from now, three years from now. By 2030, people say, wow, you accomplished something. That's my end of speech. Thank you.
Okay. Well, in the interest of time, I think I'll hold my comments, but I'm hearing a real strong commitment from the entire council on achieving these goals and support for the plan that you've put ahead, put forth. And I think, you know, checking back, reassessing, making sure that we're actually achieving what we're hoping to do is going to be very helpful. So, um, is this something we can put on the consent calendar? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, could you make a motion, please?
I move to direct staff to prepare the 2026, 2030 Sustainable Bellevue Plan for action at a future meeting on consent.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to take a break and we'll come back at 10 after. This is our second study session item and I'm going to have the city manager to introduce this, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And, um, we are all going to be brief, given the time tonight. Um, the city does adopt a legislative agenda every year. That provides, uh, staff and our lobbyists and you all as representatives of the city, um, a roadmap to help articulate our legislative priorities. Um, it's used with our state lawmakers, it's used with agencies and peer jurisdictions and community to help, um, us work together to achieve goals. That legislative agenda has been worked on very hard by Katie Halsey. And she's put a lot of work into it so that tonight, as she runs through this presentation, do not take that as any indication of how much work she's put into the development of this legislative agenda in front of you today. I know she'll do an excellent job, um, of articulating what's in there and why. And give you an opportunity to, um, provide, uh, updates to it if you wish or to take it as it is. So with that, I will introduce, um, Jenicee Atkins, our deputy city manager, Katie Kasimba Halsey, our assistant director for government relations. And with that, I will turn it over to Jenicee.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. For the sake of time, I will just hand it directly to my colleague Katie Kasimba Halsey. Katie, take it away.
Mayor and deputy mayor and city council members, it's great to be here with you tonight. Uh, this is one of my favorite topics leading up to the state, um, session happening early next year. So first, I just want to clear the record, we do have a state legislative agenda and a federal legislative agenda. Tonight's discussion is about the state legislative agenda in advance of that 2026 legislative session. Our federal legislative agenda is more timed around the president's budget, so that'll be next year. So for tonight, staff is recommending that the city council provide input on the draft 2026 state legislative agenda and provide direction for adoption. How we're going to do that tonight is go through a 2026 session preview, review the draft legislative agenda components, um, talk very quickly about the AWC priority issues and some next steps. So I wanted to spend just a quick moment talking about what to expect as we prepare for that 2026 legislative session. It does start on January 12th, so the countdown is on. This will be the second year of the legislative biennium, which means this is going to be the short session, 60 days. I am very happy about that and I hope you join me in that. Um, the long session happens on the odd number of years and those are 105 days. Now, what it means though during a short session is it's very quick, um, really quick turnarounds, really quick timelines. But they are focused on policy issues and then the supplemental budgets. Um, and I also just wanted to let you know that we do anticipate that the political climate for this legislative session will be very similar to what we have seen in previous sessions, especially in 2025. So there's a few things that lead up to session. And let's start with election day, which is 21 days away, but I'm sure no one here is counting at all. Uh, there are nine races for the state legislature across the state, including one in the 41st and one in the 48th. So while we may see some new faces from around the state in the state legislature, there won't be that political shift. Um, the second item is the November 18th state economic and revenue forecast. Um, that is a crucial, that will be a crucial signal to whether the state is facing further softness headed into the 2026 legislative session. The last forecast was just released about, uh, two or three weeks ago and it indicated that there was about a $900 million softening already. So that would be a revenue deficit, um, or a budget deficit over four years. So to biennia, four years. Um, it's going to make trade offs really complicated, this legislative session. Um, early in December, we'll start seeing the first bills drop. That's another way of saying prefiled legislation, so we get an early preview. And our state relations team will be eager to start reviewing those. Committee Legislative Days happens on, on the week of December 1st. And then also the governor's supplemental budget will be, um, released before December 20th. And, um, like I mentioned earlier, it's going to be the supplemental budget that adjusts for revenue forecasts, cost, um, caseloads or cost changes, new priorities and emergencies. And just to note that this will be Governor Ferguson's first opportunity to propose his budget. Before we start talking, before we start talking about the legislative agenda development or the legislative agenda, just wanted to make sure that you all knew that there was a lot of feedback that went into this process and alignment with the strategic target areas. And of course, it was made public to individuals, um, through the council packet and you heard from some individuals today. Now, on to the different elements of the state legislative agenda. We have two key different elements. One is the key legislative priorities. So those are the top priorities for the cities, the ones of utmost importance that we'll spend a majority of our staffing resources and, and ask a lot of you all as well to help support us on that. These will be presented to legislators in a one page summary, something easy to hand off and easy to, um, have as an elevator pitch. Then we have a much larger segment of legislative agenda, that's the state policy statement. And this covers a broader range of issues that reflect Bellevue's values and ongoing policy interests. But the state policy statement is really intended to provide flexibility for us to engage on bills, funding proposals and policy discussions that may arise during session. Many of these issues would be led by partner agencies or regional coalitions. So we may not be the lead, but we may be contributors. And then finally, I wanted to indicate a new area of the legislative agenda by way of the economic prosperity and partnership, which is my next slide. This new area of the agenda is really a, um, a call out to state legislators on that one pager that is very specific to direction that we've already heard from you all earlier this year. Council provided direction on several state revenue proposals being considered in Olympia during the 2025 legislative session. And in response, the city sent a letter outlining concerns on those proposals that were being, um, identified by the legislature and the impacts it could have as Bellevue as an employer and on our businesses and on our residents. To carry that message forward, we've drafted a formal statement for 2026 that reflects those council positions and values. The statement acknowledges that economic uncertainty- The statement acknowledges that economic uncertainty faces, facing the state and the very real downturn impacts on cities like Bellevue. We're asking the legislature to consult with Bellevue on economic impacts of tax proposals or budget packages on cities, employers, and residents. We will be looking at those proposals through a few different lenses, including fiscal sustainability and economic prosperity. We also have several key priorities, um, and those, uh, first start with two key priorities because I think there's a common theme between the two, which is housing and permitting. And we want to really emphasize, um, that there is two critical themes here, a strong need for partnership with the legislature and sufficient time to implement new housing and land use laws effectively. The state has passed significant legislation, um, over the last few years. You all have seen much of it come through this council, and Bellevue is ready and eager to be part of the solution. But we ask the legislature to provide both the time necessary and also the resources so that we can address the, um, the vision of the state legislature. So first, on affordable housing, I'll mention that we remain deeply committed to this. It has been on our legislative agenda previously. It will remain so, um, in 2026, given your feedback. And, um, what we are working and hoping to do is to demonstrate that cities want to lead in this area, but in order to do so, we must have the support by the state, um, and there must be a consistent and regional partnership in the legislature. We support flexible funding tools that cover all phases of affordable housing, from early planning to pre-development to construction and acquisition, since these are all important elements to move a project forward. And then on streamlined permitting, this was also included in the 2025 legislative agenda as a key legislative priority. Bellevue, as you know, continues to lead in digital permitting innovation and streamlining processes and improving customer experiences. We are asking the state to help modernize the MyBuildingPermit.com platform, which supports statewide priorities, including accelerating housing production, boosting economic development, and ensuring consistent permitting across jurisdictions. So we're requesting support, a financial support from the state. Moving on to something I know you heard about earlier today, which is transportation. We consistently identify transportation as a key priority in our legislative agenda, and for very good reason. At the same time, the transportation fund, the transportation budget is facing a funding crisis. Gas, tax revenues continue to decline while project costs continue to rise. And so we recommend that the council continue to advocate for these projects, but be mindful of the significant budget pressures on the transportation budget and that this is a, um, a supplemental budget year. So similar to 2025, we, um, recommend that we advocate for two key washstop projects. That's 52124 and Rent into Bellevue Contract 3, part of the I-405167 program. And then, new to our legislative agenda, but not new, not a new policy for us, is the business access and transit lanes, or otherwise known as BAT lanes. Um, in 2025, we worked closely with Representative Zahn to advance a bill to maximize the public benefit of limited roadway space and improve transit efficiency while also recognizing the need that employer shuttles can help in that solution alongside transit buses. One last thing, and it's at the bottom of this slide, but an important mention, is that, uh, we recommend thanking our legislators for supporting the Bellevue Grand Connection Crossing through the capital budget funding that was provided in 2025 and through flexible funding tools that were, uh, provided to Bellevue in 2025 as well. However, there is more work to be done to secure additional funding, so we'll want to make sure and keep this on their radar. The next piece of this is the state policy statement. And like in 2025, the policy statement aligns with the city council's strategic target areas, which is what you see on the screen bolded. A few things that you might notice as you looked through the, um, state policy statement is that they are relatively broad in nature. So a lot of different bullets, but broad in nature. There is an intention to that. The state policy statement is not intended to be prescriptive or overly prescriptive. We really want to be nimble. We want to be able to be reactive to amendments or to bills as they drop in Olympia. And with only a 60-day session, that's going to happen very quickly. I'll move on to this, the AWC 2026 legislative agenda. We are a member of the Association of Washington Cities, otherwise known as AWC, and we have actively participated in their legislative process, including serving on the Legislative Priorities Committee. Councilmember Newen House recently served on that committee and wrapped us up in September. While Bellevue does not always align perfectly with every position on the AWC agenda, our membership does offer clear benefits, and that is why it's important for us to think about the, the benefits that it provides. First, it allows us to focus on our resources on city-specific priorities, while AWC can really focus on those issues that are statewide. Second, it provides a unified credible voice on issues where a stronger coalition may be needed. So, um, AWC does provide that function, and oftentimes, we are hoping to drive those issues, as evidenced by the 2026 legislative agenda. The four key priorities in that agenda are indigent defense, also known as providing legal counsel to people who often, um, don't have the means or resources to provide it. And we're requesting, or AWC is requesting enhanced funding and state support for public defense services. Housing supply, which is very consistent with our, um, own draft 2026 legislative agenda. Giving cities more tools and resources to expand housing options across the full housing spectrum. Transportation, that's a common theme today, including traffic safety and sustainable tra, transportation revenues. And then a new one, um, that was identified as a priority is state shared revenues, including really the emphasis on preserving revenues that the state shares with cities that are really critical, um, so that we can continue to deliver basic services that the, the public just expects out of cities. So next steps, um, we've got a lot of work to do. And one of those things that we'll be looking for is for you to give us direction on the state legislative agenda so we can get to that work. The faster we do that, the faster we can have those conversations with legislators and do the early advocacy work. We'll have a, um, a session look ahead meeting and a meeting with council member, or with legislators, um, before session. Session starts on the 12th, and it will end on the, um, sorry, January 12th, and it will end on March 12th, and there'll be a few opportunities to go to Olympia in between. And finally, I just wanted to, um, wrap up this portion of the, of the presentation by thanking each of you for your one-on-one briefings that we had over the last few weeks. Um, and there was a reoccurring theme that was heard during those briefings, that the city should really provide additional clarity to the legislature on how Bellevue evaluates proposed state tax measures. And so with that feedback, and because it was echoed by several, um, members, we've provided this, um, a staff-proposed amendment that would come at the end of the first paragraph in the Economic Prosperity and Partnership section, that is the blue section on the top of the first page, that says Bellevue may not be able to support tax proposals that would create a direct impact on Bellevue's employment base and that would give Washington a competitive disadvantage in a competitive marketplace. And with that, um, we are looking for the city council to provide input on the draft 2026 state legislative agenda and provide direction for adoption.
Can I jump in there, Katie? So, uh, just to kind of go back, uh, one step, uh, you can leave it on that direction, though. Uh, we do really want your input and feedback. We know we've had conversations with some of you about some suggested language that you might want to consider for amendments tonight. Uh, happy to jump right into that, if that's what you'd like to do. That one, uh, that Katie just walked through a moment ago is one we heard from several of you. And so we do recommend that one in particular and wanted to put it kind of front and center, but it's kind of a jumping off point for you all to talk with us, give us your feedback about the agenda across the board and about any modifications that you all want to discuss with your colleagues to see if there's, um, shared support for. Okay. So we have the, um, the proposed legislative agenda, and then we have some potential amendments. I have an amendment, two amendments from Dave, uh, Councilmember Hamilton. Um, I have two from Councilmember Newen House. There are two from me, and then there is one that a bunch of people brought up that, um, staff wrote at the bottom of this page that they gave us. So, um, I would like to just kind of go down the list first of the proposed amendments and decide, you know, whether we're going to agree with those, and then we can talk about the, the, the whole. So Councilmember Hamilton, why don't you start us off? And maybe you could tell us what your amendment is and why.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I would, um, in the key legislative priorities regarding the Bellevue Grand Connection, would just like to add some language at the end of that, and that language is, "And we plan to request future ongoing state partnerships." So the idea here is to, obviously, it's not a budget year, but to kind of set this up for '27 and to just be clear that this is a top priority project for us, and we intend to come back, uh, and ask for some additional support for it, so.
So can I, thank you. So can I get staff feedback on our men, proposed amendments? Just a brief summary of, of feedback, is that all right? Is, are you okay with me asking? Yes, one by, one by one.
I'll just briefly say that, um, this is our intent for a strategy moving into 2027 legislative session, and this, um, this was an amendment that staff concur with.
Okay, great. Um, so let's just, any comments or questions on this first amendment?
One comment?
Yes.
I'm wondering if support is better than partnership. I'd like to be very clear that we're looking for support. I'm curious why the choice of partnership?
Uh, the choice of partnership was to demonstrate that it really is a joint action and that we want to be partners in this together. But, um, I think the term support, um, would, would serve this statement just fine.
Any feelings, Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes, fine.
Okay. I don't want wordsmithed very much tonight, but, oh, we'll take that recommendation, I know. Okay, um, so, uh, we'll just leave that one there. And then Councilmember Hamilton, you had a second one under thriving people in communities.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, on page four, and so I propose to strike the last sentence and to replace it with, "We request strong state partnership to meet growing needs, strengthen human services infrastructure, and support the workforce so that individuals and families can live with dignity, stability, and opportunity." And the idea there is that I just thought we needed to have a little bit stronger language and that fit more in line with the overall legislative agenda, and that that particular category received essentially what, what I saw as the same level of importance as the rest of the legislative agenda, and I just thought we needed it to be a little stronger.
Okay. Any comments from staff on that?
I'll just say that this is consistent with the Human Services Plan, and, um, staff, um, feel that this fits well.
Okay. Any comments or questions from council on that? Okay. Um, so, thank you, Councilmember Hamilton, then.
And then Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Also, too, on that, I know that we just saw that slide 14, and I, I do think that, um...
Well, we're not there yet. We're going to get there.
But at some point, I'd like to just make a suggestion on how that might be changed.
We'll bring it back later.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Newen House, you had two, uh, potential amendments. One's under safe and efficient transportation.
Correct. Um, I wanted to add a little line. Bellevue has concerns about the potential impacts of retail delivery fee, um, which is potentially going to be looked at again in the state legislature, uh, something that, um, has been up for discussion, AWC and others as well. My concerns around that is, um, the impacts to, uh, one of our largest employers here. Uh, the retail delivery fees also create an additional financial burden on consumers. Uh, retail delivery fees are regressive in nature and create a greater financial burden on disadvantaged populations. Um, and since we're just talking about our sustainable plan, um, it also impacts our environment as well. I would rather one delivery truck brings, um, uh, groceries to 10 homes than 10 homes all driving to different grocery stores to bring back, um, those, uh, those groceries. So for that, I wanted to add that, uh, that one line at the bottom there.
Okay, can I get some feedback from staff, please?
Yeah, staff reviewed this language and feels that, um, it aligns with the language that prefaces the amendment about how we would look at, um, new potential revenue sources. And, um, to Councilmember Newen House's point, this is a regressive, um, uh, funding mechanism which does not, um, align with the language just above the, the recommended amendment.
Okay. Any comments or questions about this proposal? Okay. Uh, Councilmember Newen House, you have a second one under community safety and health.
Correct. Uh, with that one, wanted to, uh, strike and just have the, uh, language say, Bellevue supports enhanced and improved state mandated training for new and existing officers. Bellevue also supports fully funding the required basic training for new officers. So from that, we are removing the two organizations, um, which, um, you know, might not be familiar with, but that's the CJTC, which, um, I'm requesting be removed because, um, of some issues within that commission's current structure that lacks transparency, responsiveness, and operational clarity needed to justify further support from the city. I think that, um, uh, local police agencies across Washington have raised some serious concerns around, uh, this organization, uh, or commission and its unilateral decisions. Most notably, you might be aware of the abrupt ban on the six-hour P320, which disrupted training statewide and forced departments to scramble for replacements. Uh, that included Bellevue, Kirkland, and many other municipalities. They all pushed back, citing budget strain and, and officer readiness risk. So that, along with other reasons, I'll keep it short. Um, I think we, we keep the, the thrust of it, but we remove the, the two organizations that were included.
Okay. Staff feedback, please.
Um, I would just would reference the term, the words enhanced and improved state mandated training. So this is consistent with our legislative agenda, um, and it keeps to the, to the true heart of that statement.
Um, any comments or questions? I have one comment. I feel like it should say Bellevue supports state funding of the required basic training as opposed to just fully funding, because it almost sounds like we're willing to fund it ourselves. I don't know what you think about that, if we should include state funding.
I think that's a nice, friendly amendment to add to that.
Okay. Any, can we have head nods? Okay. Um, so those are those two. I have two. You'll get your chance.
Okay.
So, under high-performance government, I wanted to add, "When state policies are achieving their goals at the local level, we encourage the state to recognize and preserve those local approaches, maintaining the flexibility cities need to effectively meet the unique needs of our communities." And I, I propose that because, um, as an example, if the state, uh, proposes a, um, a multifamily property tax exemption kind of recipe for doing that, that it may not be, we, we would lose our city's flexibility to make a tailor-made one for us, which we have done so successfully in the past. So this is trying to maintain that flexibility as a city.
This is consistent with how we've approached other issues within our legislative agenda, so I, I think it aligns well.
Any comments or questions? Okay, thank you. Um, and then the other one, under high-quality built natural environment, I wanted to amend it to say, um, this is talking about SEPA. So Bellevue supports exploring refinements to state regulatory requirements that provide more efficient and predictable pathways to develop housing, including expanded State Environmental Protection Act categorical exemptions to support residential projects, including conversions. Uh, and that's just, you know, um, right now, it's because of SEPA, it's almost impossible to convert, uh, an older office building into housing, and that's a really good tool to have access to. So this would, um, make the, uh, the exemptions better for that type of a conversion. So any comments or questions, or I guess I'd like to hear from you first?
I'll, I'll just state that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan with trying to achieve and will achieve our goal of 35,000 additional housing units within the city by 2044.
Okay. So why don't you go ahead and bring out the economic prosperity and partnership one, since you're, you have staff next to that. So many councilmembers added the same idea here.
Yes, thank you. This specific statement emphasizes our key concerns about direct impacts on Bellevue's employment base, also the risk of making Washington less competitive. And importantly, it does so without closing the door on thoughtful policy that may emerge or may change over the course of a legislative session. And with that, I'm open to your feedback.
Any comments or questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Hamilton, and then Nguyen House.
Great, thank you, Mayor. I mean, I think this is really an important statement, but I do suggest that we take a step further and that we strike "may not be able to" and replace it with "cannot." And I think we were really clear in the last session about how we felt about some of the tax proposals that we heard from Olympia. I appreciate the mayor's leadership in working with many of our neighbors and making that point very clear to the legislature. And I think that that, we should stand behind that statement, that effort and our neighbors, and continue to support that approach that we took. And I just cannot imagine us, I believe it at that, but I want it to be stronger, and I want to be very clear about it.
So I'll let you weigh in on that, because I had brought up the same thing. Okay.
Mayor, councilmembers, I think this one did come up from multiple councilmembers, and I think we also heard even since developing this that you might want something stronger. So I think you could make that modification. I don't know that we would advise it. It would foreclose some options for you and for us to be able to do the work that we do in Olympia. We did write yet another slightly stronger version, trying to be responsive to that desire, to, because, understand what you're saying in terms of wanting to try to make it clear how the city feels about this, but not knowing what they are actually going to put forward. And that's the trick, is we don't want to box ourselves in or out of any hard positions on proposals that haven't been put on the table yet. And so it's trying to thread a little bit of a needle, which doesn't foreclose our ability to come up with a very strong letter once we see some proposals, or once we hear that they're in the works. All those options and tools and strategies and tactics are available to us once we adopt the agenda. I will, if you'll indulge me, I'll read the stronger version that we wrote in trying to kind of fine-tune this in.
But you don't recommend this, what you're about to read?
No, this is, I wouldn't necessarily recommend Bellevue cannot, because that is pretty finite.
Okay.
I'll give you a different, stronger action, which is in more clear voice. Bellevue urges the legislature to avoid tax proposals that could create a direct impact on our employment base and may put Washington at a competitive disadvantage in a dynamic marketplace. This is, so the language we have used here overall is really drawn from last year's letter that you all signed and let us send to Olympia. But we can adopt language that is as finite as cannot. It, just as people who do this work, it would be easier for us to not draw that bold of a line in the sand, because then it kind of sets us in a category. And we are asking for other things, like enhanced human services support that runs somewhat into friction with drawing a very hard line about revenue sources. And so just keeping a little bit more agility for us to be tactical and strong and responsive in the session, which we did last year in a very powerful way, and I think very effectively, we want to be able to still command those tools when you want us to. This doesn't foreclose that. We would just encourage you to try to tune that in. None of this is, you know, easily black and white. So we can draw the line where you want it to be.
Okay.
That's our advice.
Let's hear from Councilmember Nguyen House. You were going to comment on...
Yeah, well, oh, on this right now, or?
Yeah.
Okay, on this one? I like the stronger language.
I understand not wanting to get boxed in. On the other hand, I think setting clear expectations can be helpful for us versus having to do all that additional work that we had to do last session in terms of the letters, and as mentioned by Councilmember Hamilton, the leadership of the mayor and all of us had to show. So I kind of like setting those expectations. However, you know, if my colleagues feel that a slightly less direct approach or pointed approach would be better, I could live with that. But I just, I feel, and I appreciate we're having this conversation, because I just don't feel like we have set the table as clearly as we could at times, so, on certain things. And I 100% agree that we want to stay as nimble as possible, but in this area, especially given the softness of what we've heard in terms of revenues, et cetera, I'm concerned we're going to have to fight those same battles again.
So I'm just going to say in response to that, that you're the negotiators, and you're working with Olympia. And I feel like if you're recommending that, that that gives you a better negotiation start, I'm okay with that, with the amendment that you made. Do you want to read it again with the urging?
It is, Bellevue urges the legislature to avoid tax proposals that could create a direct impact on our employment base and may put Washington at a competitive disadvantage in a dynamic marketplace. And that was, that's a just kind of moved-around version of one of the sentences in that hard letter that we did write last year. So it is trying to kind of bring back language that you all endorsed last year. Again, it's for you all to determine. It would be our preference, it is not the end of the world for us one way or the other. As you said, we will deploy the right tactics and strategies in real time in reaction to what we see unfold during the session.
Can I ask a question? Okay, let me go back to Councilmember Hamilton, just to close this, and then I know Councilmember Lee has a question as well. Go ahead.
So I appreciate that. I don't, I only came up with "cannot" because it just replaces the words in the amendment you had. But, and I wouldn't say that we've boxed ourselves in. I mean, we're staking our ground, and we did that last session. So I really think that if we don't have that strong language, we're backtracking from where we were. And I think that, I think we made the right decision. I think the mayor and the other mayors that went down and really made the case for us did an excellent job. I think that is the message we want to send. And I think we have built a good coalition that we can build on. And that is with our other mayors, up and down 405 and 167. I want to honor what we did, I want to build on it. And I do really think that we need to be clear, as we were last session, and follow through on that. So we are staking our ground because it's so important. I don't think we're boxing ourselves in any more than we did last year. And I think without that strong language, we're backtracking from that important ground that we did stake. And so I just would strongly encourage us to be crystal clear that we will not support those tax proposals if they're brought back. And I hardly think it's "if" they're brought back. I think, you know, the conventional wisdom is they're coming back, and we need to hold firm. And we made the right decision last session, and I think being very firm this session is the right decision as well.
Okay, so we're talking about this amendment, potential amendment in the economic prosperity and partnership at the bottom of page two. And so if Councilmember Lee, if you have a comment or a question about that, now is your time.
I have a statement.
Okay.
I completely agree with Councilmember Hamilton. We need to take a stake. It's a very strong position we have to take, as he mentioned, for the same reasons. I like the way he put it, actually, is that Bellevue will not support tax proposals. Very clear, that's what we did last year. And we made a statement, it was very clear. So all the mayors went there, that's very good. So why, you know, be wishy-washy?
Okay.
Okay, so, I like that. So I would support that, otherwise I would not support this. Bellevue will not take, support tax proposal.
Thank you.
That could create a direct impact.
Okay, we'll just move on, we've got a lot to go through tonight.
I have another, I have another one that relates to this, another...
Can we, can I stop for just a minute?
You want to come back to me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Sumatuviria.
Okay, be sure. So I actually like the urge language, so, but this is a reality of a business owner. So today I did my payroll tax, right? Before even I get into the expense, I have eight lines of tax I have to pay. This is before the cost of goods sold. So this is a reality of any kind of size of business. We have to put a tax burden before we even have claim of income. So I would say like, but also we understand that there should be a dancing, and it's a relationship we build, like the mayor said, you are the negotiator. So I think if we can keep the language strong enough, but also thinking about for the benefit of small businesses like mine, right? That's a crucial element, because by this rate of taxation, all the small businesses, we're going to fade away. There's no way I can make any profit, which means we are losing really important workforce development in the city. So I would say, I think that I like the language we're talking about. Also, we have to be really strong about how to protecting the business who is actually providing the workforce and also the environment of the community.
Great, great input. Okay, Councilmember Bargava, and then Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I'm in central time agreement with Councilmember Hamilton, Nguyen House, and Lee. But I don't know what the boxing in results in, because I don't know. So my suggestion maybe could be to strongly urge, rather than just urge, could be an option on the table, so it really makes it very clear. But I would love to know what your boxing in looks like, like, what is the downside really? Taking a firm stance?
So I'll reflect back, at a high level, I'll reflect back a little bit on last legislative session. The city was very effective and very strong in making a clear, taking a very clear position on the tax and revenue proposals in Olympia that would have had a deleterious effect on job growth and economic prosperity. It did impact our other priorities with the majority caucuses, and they said, you know, they sent us messages to say, that was a very strong position, and, you know, if you are seeking our partnership and our help on other things, we may not be as amenable to your help on those other things. This is okay. It is okay to, as elected officials, to elected officials. It is okay to take strong positions. Those strong positions don't happen in a vacuum. That is all right. But that is, all this entire agenda of priorities, they're all, it's all kind of a small group of people who are our audience. And so it is, if we adopt language that is Bellevue cannot, that is okay, we will work with that. It is important for you all, as elected officials, speaking to other elected officials, to understand that there may be, you know, reverberations, depending on how we articulate it.
I'm just going to add, maybe you can speak to this, the repercussions it had on our TIF request.
It had a specifically challenging impact on our request for the Grand Connection and for TIF last year. But, and it's probably going to be hard to unring that. It doesn't mean we can't come back and still take positions on all kinds of things, but it is a small group of people.
So based on that, my recommendation would be to stay with strongly urge, maybe a slight modification to what you had later, but keep, like, negotiations are negotiations, and we want to be able to have a position of power in those negotiations.
Are you okay with that, Councilmember Sumatuviria? Okay, Deputy Mayor, would you like to weigh in?
Yeah, mine is going to be very short. I completely agree with this whole council, as we are opposing any tax that puts our advantages that we have, that we attract, all of these talent businesses. So completely aligned with Councilmember Hamilton, but I like the dancing and negotiation and building trust with our state legislators that is going to be huge for us to get the resources that we need for our city. So I am aligned with Councilmember Sumatuviria and Bargava and Mayor on listening to you as a staff, as how we are going to do that dance.
Okay, so I'm hearing a majority support for Bellevue strongly urges the legislature to avoid tax proposals that create a direct impact on Bellevue's employment base and that would give Washington a competitive disadvantage in a competitive marketplace. Am I saying that right, based on your recommendation?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Okay, all right, Councilmember Lee.
We have seen what happened when Amazon got taxed and they moved to Bellevue. And Microsoft is talking about the taxes the states impose, and they can move anytime they want to. It's not just small businesses, it's big business. And that is not suitable. And so we need to take a strong position. And negotiation is another thing.
Councilmember Lee, can I just stop you for a moment? We've already come to a consensus here.
That's okay, there's no consensus.
No, we don't have time, it's five minutes to 10.
There's no consensus. I have to say my piece. There's no consensus.
I'm going to ask you...
You give me time to say, I have a proposal to make, please.
What is your proposal?
I have, listen to my proposal, but I have to give you a reason.
Okay, can I get an extension on the meeting, please?
Yes, I move to extend our meeting to 10:15. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. This doesn't affect just the businesses, affect businesses. Microsoft can move. Brett Smith, President of Microsoft, has been going around, talking to people, saying we need to get the clear message to state legislatures that they cannot impose unreasonable taxes. That's what we have to stand for. I would propose, this is not just affecting the corporations, businesses, it affects individuals. You know, we cannot just say because we want to do something, they gave us authority to tax, but we don't want to tax, we have other ways to do it, other ways to prioritize, make sure we do the things that we need to do, not just to figure out how can we have more taxation. The state can give us all ways to tax, but it doesn't mean that we will tax. It's up to us, City of Bellevue. We have to treat our citizens right, we have to treat our businesses right. So the citizen will live here, will stay here, will prosper here. Business will come here, to stay here will prosper. If we don't do that, citizen will move away, business will move away. We'll end up with empty buildings.
Okay, could you tell us what your recommendation is, please?
My proposal is, Bellevue, I'd like to go along with Councilmember Hamilton's position. Bellevue will not support tax proposal.
Okay.
Second, I would like to add another amendment, saying, it's not just for employees, but it's not for employee base. I don't think we should tax unnecessarily, okay? I don't know how you're going to frame that, but I'm just giving you a sentiment. If you don't want to do that, that's fine, because I think this covers that anyway, for whatever reason it is. But I just want to have opportunity to talk to our representatives that represent us, they can listen to us.
Okay, I hear you.
Okay, so I'm just saying that, I'm making the statement.
So Councilmember Lee is proposing that we say Bellevue will not unnecessarily support tax proposal, or will not support tax proposals that unnecessarily create a direct impact on Bellevue's blah blah blah. Does that, we've got four people in support of the staff-proposed legislation, which says Bellevue strongly urges the legislature to avoid tax proposals. And so I just want to know if anybody has changed their mind to support what Councilmember Lee is proposing. Okay.
Like, you're talking about their first...
No, he added...
They may not, they cannot.
"Will not," and then the "unnecessarily."
No, I'm okay with that as staff.
Okay, I don't think that you have a majority in support of what you're recommending. You recommended that, say Bellevue will not support tax proposals that unnecessarily create a direct...
They say will not support.
Okay, anyway...
I just agree with what Councilmember Hamilton said.
Okay, that sounds good.
Councilmember Bargava mentioned that it would encourage or something.
Okay, okay.
We say will not support it.
Okay.
So let's be clear of the proposal language.
Yes, we're clear. Okay, so those are the five amendments, or more than that, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven amendments. And so now I'd like to ask, given, having read the legislative agenda, I'm hoping you don't bring something up new, but you have the chance. Is there anything that you felt like it misses? Councilmember Nguyen House?
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to introduce one more, something actually that I did talk to staff about, and I think we might have a slight disagreement on it, but I did want to bring it up for my colleagues to consider. And that is removing bullet number four under "high-performance governments" state policy statement. government's state policy statement. This is the bullet that speaks to lifting the property tax levy lift options and expanding the real estate excise tax. We just went through the largest tax increase in state history. Affordability is something I hear about every single day. We don't need it, we've got bank capacity, which Genesee can speak to, that's something that we talked about during the briefing. When it comes to the REIT, I feel like this is perfectly in line with our priorities, because expanding REIT would undermine affordable housing efforts, penalize nonprofit developers, and increase barriers to housing access, especially in high-cost cities just like Bellevue. REIT already imposes up to a 3% on property sales over 3 million, making Washington's rate the highest in the nation now. For affordable housing providers, this means less capital for construction, land acquisition, and supportive services. Even with recent exemptions, many mixed-use transitional housing projects will still face steep REIT costs that threaten their viability. So for those reasons, I would like to remove bullet number four.
I have four minutes.
So I have a question. Does it make sense to try to include that sentiment in the one we just amended? To add that, that it's not just about employees, employers?
If I could.
No, there's no motion here. No.
Mayor, that's a great question, and what I would really encourage you to consider, and frankly, it resonates with a lot of the points that Councilmember Lee made, if you read the entire section on economic prosperity and partnership, it speaks to a lot of the concerns and considerations that you are talking about, about the impact on taxpayers, the impact on residents, the entire, we've been talking about one sentence, the entire section is very inclusive and holistic about the tax burden and sensitivity to tax and revenue proposals, not just on big businesses or corporations, but in many different aspects. So I would definitely point you to that language, because we tried to make it really reflect a lot of the collective concern and attention to the collective impacts of taxation coming from the state. So I would definitely ask you to look at that. I think it will address some of what you're looking for, because it's not just about major employers. Altogether, it really does address that. So Councilmember Newen House, we did definitely talk about that in your briefing, and I appreciate that. If you wanted to mod, if there was consensus to make that modification, you could certainly do that. We did put together a way to do that, if there was desire to do that. I will reflect that for the last three years, these two things have been in your adopted legislative agenda. So it would not be unusual to keep them in, because they have been in for the last three years, but we could make an amendment if you found it was important to take it up a level, and that would also be okay.
I feel like we need to see what we're talking about. Do you have it printed out, or is it?
If you have the legislative agenda in front of you, I can easily point to the language that we would propose removing.
I'm going to pull it up on my phone.
It's on page three, under high-performance government, and it is the fourth bullet under governance and fiscal sustainability. The bullet reads, "The city requests the legislature provide greater flexibility for local revenue decisions," comma, "including modifying the property tax levy lift options and expanding the real estate excise tax authority." We could remove the language after the comma. We could also modify the language before the comma to include new revenue tools, so there's a few different ways that we could do this. But it is a bullet that has a qualifier to it, so there is some ways that we could reduce that language, or eliminate that language.
The reason why it was not on the list of all the amendments is because we did not hear it from a number of council members. And so we wanted you all to be able to have the conversation here, of course.
I mean, we go through this every, what, two years, or every year?
Every year.
Okay, every year. We wanted to change it back, for some reason we could, but.
I have a question.
Yes.
Question to you, actually. I know it's been there for the last couple of years, what is the downside of removing it?
Yeah, what I would impart is that this is not language that is calling for new taxes for the city to take on. This is calling for policy flexibility to manage local services sustainably. So it's about preserving local control and ensuring that cities, including Bellevue, have the ability to respond to future needs without being constrained by statutory limits. So it is really about the ability for cities to have local control. It would be your direction. If this legislation was to pass, then the city would have to take action on whatever that would be. This is not asking for the city to take action on any type of tax proposal at the city.
Yes.
Did you get your question?
Yes. I 100% agree with Councilmember Newen House, that the phrasing that we read here kind of encourage in getting more taxes for the property, the property tax, and also the sales tax on the selling properties. I would encourage, if my councilors agree to, because I love the flexibility, I like to take ownership of what that money can do for us if needed in future, but I think the language needs to be improved, or removed, or be better. I think the reason it has been there for three years are economic, and everything is going not in the right direction, so we need to also be flexible to be able to respond to what the reality is, that is, everything is expensive, and people are being very, very struggling with basic needs.
So what's your proposal?
I think, I like to, that, I don't have any wording suggestion, but I would love to staff work on that, that the perception that we are increasing any tax on the property or sales on the housing is not the point of this, and it's all about the local flexibility than state ownership.
Do you want to work with Councilmember Newen House on language, and then bring it back to us to either approve or not another meeting?
What I would, maybe if I can spitball this in a moment, if you look at the fourth bullet, what if there was a period after the word decisions? So the city requests that the legislature provide greater flexibility for local revenue decisions, that would be one option. We could also weave in some language about responding to future needs for regional growth.
I like what you just said.
I like that, too.
Is that the way you think, Councilmember Newen House?
Yeah, I can be agreeable with that. We're not specifically advocating then for certain tax proposals.
Right.
We're just saying local control if needed.
Thank you for your recommendation. We're okay with that. Okay, so that sounds good.
Sorry, is the recommendation just strike the second sentence altogether, then?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's what I understood, yeah.
After the comma. Okay, so, yeah, the comma is now a period.
Yep.
Okay, so thank you for adding that. Is there any other thing that we left out, that you feel that you want to address? Okay, so right now, we have eight amendments that we've gone over, and so let's review them. I'm going to ask, this is going to be hard to do, maybe, but I'm going to ask you to make a motion to, we'll vote on the amendments first, okay, and then we can vote to approve the entire package. Does that sound good? Okay, so why don't you? Yes?
Because this is just direction to staff, you don't need to go through the formal motion and vote process, so if that makes it easier.
No, that makes it a lot easier.
Yeah.
So the direction to staff is what?
Sorry?
Tell me.
I move to adopt the 20, I move to adopt the 2026 state legislative agenda as amended this evening.
Second.
Okay, that sounds perfect. And staff, you feel like you have what you need to bring that back? Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Councilmember Lee, did you vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. I believe we are adjourned. Thank you.
Great. Great.